Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us at our first meeting in March. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the device at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Palowski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Allen.
Here. Okay. Chief Evers, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Mark.
Okay. Onto approval of minutes. Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk.
Council President, should we read?
Yep. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notice regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
Okay. A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at citiclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you're using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just for the record, I heard that Facebook and Instagram were down today, and YouTube is a little fuzzy, so if anybody's out there watching YouTube and having a problem, thank goodness for broadcast television, HGTV, because it has no issues. So, thank you, HGTV.
And the recording will be posted in the morning if that's... Anyway.
Thank you. Okay. Onto approval of minutes. Madam Clerk, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for regular and closed session meeting minutes of February 6th and February 20th, 2024?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Council President, I'll abstain from the February 6th since I wasn't here.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, we're gonna mix it up a little bit because we have a full room and some swearings in, so we're gonna skip the... We're gonna go back to the reports and go ahead and do the honors of the swearing in.
... everybody coming out there. Well, good to see the support from fire services in one room. We've got members from Milver Fire Department, Springfield, Chatham. Both have retired chief Joe Happ in the room, they have retired chief from Summit, retired chief Mike Robbin from Milver, so good to have you guys coming out, alright? And also, I'd like to thank the families, take a lot of work and time to... He's got to be promoted, a lot of work with him today, to thank you for the families and supporting your loved ones. So with that, turn up the mirror.
Rosie, I'm taller than this.
Yes, I'm sorry. Should've raised that for you.
Yeah, come on up. Sorry. Alright, is this working? Okay.
Who's it on?
Hello. How's everybody doing? Alright, I'm gonna go this way. This is my first time with the tall mic that gets to move. This is a good position for me. Hang on. Is that better? Is that alright? Okay. So, this is Brian Harnoy. Brian started with the Summit Fire Department in October 2004 as a volunteer firefighter assigned to the Union Hose Company. In October 2005, he was hired by the Summit Fire Department as a part-time dispatcher. Brian became a career firefighter with the Summit Fire Department in July of 2007 and was promoted to fire lieutenant in January 2015. Brian graduated from Seton Hall University in May 2006 with a bachelor's degree. In addition, he has completed Advanced Firefighting Foam School at Texas A&amp;M. He is a certified emergency medical technician, fire instructor, drill ground instructor, fire inspector, and fire investigator. Also, he has completed Incident Management Level 3, Fire Officer 1, and Incident Safety Officer. Brian has completed Command and Control Series at the National Fire Academy and volunteers for the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation's Memorial Weekends at the Academy. Brian has received two Chiefs Awards for lifesaving efforts in 2010 and 2022. For the past two years, Brian has served as the department's Training Officer. Brian lives in Chatham with his wife, Megan, and their two children, Becca and Colin. I'm just guessing. Please congratulate Brian on his promotion to Battalion Chief. And I personally want to say it was a pleasure interviewing Brian in the process. This is my first time, and it was really a pleasure to hear his incredible experience, but also just to learn about him a little bit personally and to understand how important being a firefighter is to him and how important this promotion is. Repeat after me. I, Brian Harnoy...
Aye, Brian Harnoy.
...to solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
...and that I will bear true faith...
And I will bear true faith.
...and allegiance...
And allegiance.
...to the same.
To the same.
...and to the governments established...
And to the governments established.
...in the United States...
In the United States.
...and in this state...
And in this state.
...under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully.
...imparially...
Impartially.
...and justly...
And justly.
...perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
...of the position of Battalion Chief...
Position of Battalion Chief.
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Should we put the microphone?
Of course.
Oh, yeah.
Put the microphone? Yeah, yeah.
Eddie, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm gonna get better and better at this every time I do it. Or at least I'm gonna try. Brian's next. Thanks, Chief. Big job for you, buddy. Brian D. Tavis. Brian started with the Summit Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter in the Union Hose Company Number 1 on June 6th, 2012. And in January 2013, he was hired as a dispatcher telecommunications with Summit Fire Department. In January of 2015, Brian became a career firefighter with the department. He is certified in firefighter 1 and 2, a certified emergency technician, a licensed fire inspector, and a drill ground instructor. Brian has received two Chiefs Awards, the first in 2018 for exceptional duty, and in 2022, he was the recipient of the lifesaving award. Also, in 2017, he received a Group Valor Award for rescuing residents from their home on New Year's Eve. He has been involved with the Summit Fire Department Honor Guard for his entire firefighting career, and now he leads the department's Honor Guard. Brian currently resides in Lake Kapakong with his wife Maureen and their two sons, Ronan and Declan.
I heard you were on there.
Please congratulate Brian Tavis on his promotion to Lieutenant with the Summit Fire Department. And again... And my personal two cents. Again, it was really, really a pleasure to meet Brian and get to speak with him and again, understand the history here with the Summit Fire Department and his pride in this move, so congratulations. Alright, Ronan, are you ready? Got this? Alright. Repeat after me. I, Brian Tavis, do solemnly swear...
Aye, Brian Tavis, do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
...and that I will bear true faith...
And I will bear true faith.
...and allegiance...
And allegiance.
...to the same...
To the same.
...and to the governments established...
And to the governments established.
...in the United States...
In the United States.
...and in this state...
And in this state.
...under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully.
...imparially...
Impartially.
...and justly...
And justly.
...perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
...of the position of fire lieutenant...
Of the position of fire lieutenant.
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. You know what? We might as well do the proclamation. Do the proclamation. Yep. Don't take out my clerk.
Minimal damage. Thank God. Is that a timer? No, this is the timer.
Yes. We are gonna take a brief recess for everybody to leave the room.
I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Madam Mayor, will you just make sure the microphone is on? I just want to make sure everybody can hear you.
I have a feeling it's not.
Oh, that's what I thought.
Maybe just pull the other microphone to you. There you go. Okay. Like I said, again, I'm still new at this.
Okay. And we're gonna do a proclamation.
Is it calling up? This isn't... Alright, we're good.
Yeah. Come on up, Jackie.
I got it. This is good? Okay, boss. Thanks. Perfect.
How are you?
My pleasure. So, we have a proclamation tonight. Thank you, Jackie, for joining us. Who are these security guards with you? Sorry, I'm supposed to not be funny. Okay, we're getting... Moving on. Whereas, the year 2024 is the 50th anniversary of the founding of the Reeves Reed Arboretum. And whereas, in March of 1974, after a fundraising campaign run by a group of local citizens including Enid Belding, the City of Summit, and Ann and Charles Reed Jr., reached an agreement to conserve approximately 12.5 acres of open space, they formed a not-for-profit arboretum at a historic property originally known as The Clearing on Hobart Avenue, to be owned by the City of Summit but which would operate as an educational institution without city funding or services. And whereas, over the next 50 years, the arboretum expanded to 13.5 acres of historic gardens that now contain rolling lawns, the Susie Graham Reeves Rose Garden, an herb garden, 6.5 acres of woodland trails, the Gretchen Keller Azalea Garden, the Weston Nature Grove, and a glacial kettle bowl containing more than 50,000 daffodils. All are open to the public at no cost, 365 days a year. And whereas, the Board of Trustees, staff, and volunteers have cared for and improved structures, including the historic Whissner House, the Visitor Center, and Welcome Walk, the Louise... Louise Munchy Rem?
Reem.
Reem? Munchy. Munchy Reem Greenhouse, learned something new, Peters Pond and Garden, the Stackhouse Children's Education Center and Garden, the Cho Amphitheater, and other buildings used for all aspects of growing and maintaining the gardens. And whereas, the mission of Reeves Reed Arboretum is to engage, educate, and enrich visitors to become better stewards of nature and the environment through the care and utilization of the historic estate and gardens by offering more than 200 education programs, community festivals, concerts, and art programs for children, adults, and families each year. And whereas, Reeves Reed Arboretum, which contains the design visions of noted landscape architects such as Calvert... I should've read this before. Vox Vo? I don't know. Vox? Awesome. And Ellen Bittleshipman is one of only three arboretums in Union County and is a living museum listed on the National and State Registers of Historic Places. And whereas, there is no entrance fee to Reeves Reed Arboretum, making it an inclusive attraction open to everyone because of the support received through memberships, memorials, grants, private donations, sponsorships, and in-kind services. And whereas, Reeves Reed Arboretum was founded as and remains a place for environmental education and respite in nature, it is maintained by a small staff and many volunteers and welcomes thousands of visitors each year. Now, therefore, I, Dr. Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim March 5th, 2024 as Reeves Reed Arboretum Day in the City of Summit, and ask all citizens to join me in congratulating Reeves Reed Arboretum on the occasion of its 50th anniversary. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 5th day of March in the year 2024. Congratulations. Moving on to reports.
Mayor Fagan.
Are you sick of me yet?
Not yet.
Hold on. Okay. I was extremely pleased to help celebrate Read Across America Week, the nation's largest celebration of reading with Summit Public Schools. This initiative aims to motivate children and teens to read and raise awareness about the importance, value, and fun of reading throughout the year. Members of Summit Police Department, fellow elected officials, and I visited many of the elementary schools in Summit, met some wonderful young citizens, and thoroughly enjoyed reading some fun books. A big thank you to all the teachers who included us this year. The Summit Free Public Library is developing its strategic plan as a guide for the next several years, and they need your help by filling out a survey. It should take about 10 or 15 minutes to complete, and all answers will be completely anonymous. They thank you in advance for your time and support with this important project. There have been several power outages recently, including earlier this afternoon. If you have not already done so, please sign up for notifications on the city website at cityofsummit.org. You can choose to receive information on outages and other emergency and non-emergency events and initiatives, like changes to trash and recycling pickup. And while you're there, please sign up for NICSIL and Smart 911 Alerts for more time-sensitive news and updates. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Administrator Rogers?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just a few items. Please be advised that the New Jersey American Water will be performing valve replacement work on Passaic Avenue between Constantine Place and Beacon Road, beginning Monday, March 4th yesterday, and continuing through Friday, March 15th, weather permitting. Work will be done Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and Passaic Avenue will be closed between Constantine Place and Beacon Road during at-work hours. Police will be on-site to direct traffic during project work, and detours will be posted. New Jersey American Water will deliver written notifications to residents in the affected area, and hopefully that happened already. Union County's recycling and disposal events begin later this month and are open to all Union County residents. Residents can attend events for paper shredding, hazardous household waste disposal, and scrap metal recycling. To view more information and the scheduled events, please visit ucnj.org/recycling. And the final item is the March event dates for the Summit Free Market are Saturday, March 9th, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and Friday, March 22nd, 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM at the transfer station. A permit is required to enter the transfer station. For more information, you can visit cityofsummit.org/parking. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Okay. The Union County Board of County Commissioners, in collaboration with the Department of Human Services, proudly announces that they are partnering with the United Way of Greater Union County to offer free income tax assistance through the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program. The program will be staffed by trained volunteers who will assist eligible residents with the preparation of their federal and state income tax returns. For more information or to make an appointment, please call 908-353-7171. That's 908-353-7171. Or email VITA, V-I-T-A, Victor Inc., Tracy Alpha, at unitedwayguc.org. Or reach out to our communications.
It's on our Facebook page.
It's on our Facebook page. Okay. I can't believe it's already tax time. March is Women's History Month, a celebration of women's contribution to history, culture, and society. Tonight, we actually look forward to a historical minute focused on the exact topic, and for the first time, the City of Summit is hosting a Women's Month event on International Women's Day, Friday, March 8th, that's this Friday, from 4:00 to 6:00, at the Summit Community Center located at 100 Morris Avenue. The event will feature a panel discussion on women's contributions in Summit, healthy snacks, activities like yoga and meditation, and a woman's self-defense presentation by the Summit Police Department and more. The event is free, and it's open to all members of the public. Pre-registration with the Summit Department of Community Programs is required and can be completed online at summitcommunityprograms.com. I hope to see you there. Okay. Councilman Palowski, would you like to introduce our guest for the historical minute?
Sure. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Boyer for handling the historical minute at the last couple of meetings, but now, we're gonna get to some fun, because as intended, we really want our high school students to get involved with Summit and Summit history. We have Elizabeth Aaron, Vice Principal at Summit High School, who is helping coordinate everything. And tonight, we'll have Lindsay Thomas, who's a senior at Summit High. After a brief stint at CPC, she went through the Summit School System, all my alma maters, Lincoln, the middle school, and high school. She's a skilled lacrosse player and an excellent student who will pursue both of these talents at Yale next year. Sorry, Mayor Fagan. And she will present on Women in the Progressive Era in Summit.
Oh, yeah. Brian, pull it. Yeah. Excellent. Just close to it. Maybe bring it a little closer. There you go. That's perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Palowski, and thank you for having me. I'm so grateful to have this opportunity to be here today. The progressive era of the late 19th and early 20th century was marked by the avocation of social reforms, including the improvement of civic institutions, and calls for temperance and women's rights. In honor of Women's History Month in March, I wanted to highlight a few of the courageous Summit women at the forefront of the progressive movement. The women's club movement swept through the United States, in which women created clubs to propose solutions for societal problems in their local communities. Summit women were no exception. In 1893, Mary Buddington Wilcox founded the Fort Knightly Club, an all-exclusive women's club that met every two weeks to exchange opinions on the arts and ideas for Summit. A number of organizations, such as the Thrift Shop, the Family Service Association, and the Coral Society, were all created from members in the Fort Knightly Club. Similarly, the Fort Knightly Club also spawned the Town Improvement Association, of which Frances Twombly, also known as the Garbage Lady, was the president for the first 17 years. She worked to improve the cleanliness and garbage disposal for Summit, pioneering the eventual government involvement in public health. She was also known as the Mother of Recreation and raised money to create the playground in the Village Green in 1909. Furthermore, Bridget Lane was the first woman to hold a public position in Summit as the postmaster from 1886 to 1891 and 1894 to 1898. Named by President Grover Cleveland, residents questioned her appointment due to her gender. However, her soft-spoken nature quickly won her the support and respect of the community. Moreover, the Van Seis Building, today home to Wimbury's Restaurant, was once home to the local Women's Christian Temperance Union Headquarters. Willard Hall is named after Frances Willard, who served as the president of the WCTU and was one of the most celebrated women over time. She championed and fought for the temperance and women's rights movements. And the last woman I want to highlight is Augusta Larnard, the most famous female author to reside in Summit, and she lived on Blackburn Road for years and devoted her life to the fight for women's rights. She was a prolific writer for multiple newspapers such as the New York Evening Post, and in 1870, she edited The Revolution, a periodical that focused on the enfranchisement of women. You can draw a direct line from these great female leaders in the progressive movement to many women today playing leadership roles across society. I want to congratulate Dr. Fagan for her election to mayor, and I have witnessed firsthand women across Summit leading everything from charitable organizations, businesses, and church efforts to our sports leagues. It has been fun to look back at some of the key women that have helped us get to these achievements. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. That was excellent. A good kickoff for Women's Month, so... Presentation. So, we have a few presentations tonight. We are gonna start with Michael Sarah, the Executive Director of New Jersey State League of Municipalities. I was gonna have you raise your hand earlier. I was worried you weren't here. Michael Sarah is the Executive Director of the League of Municipalities. For those who are not familiar with the New Jersey League of Municipalities, it's a voluntary association created to help communities self-govern by pooling information and resources. It is volunteer, right? No pay? You do this for free?
Oh, no, no. This is...
Oh, it's paid? Okay.
No, this is my full-time job.
I was like, welcome to the group. Okay.
I do volunteer my communities.
Okay.
This is the paying...
Excellent. I was gonna say, you're very generous coming here doing this. On February 5th, this council took the action to introduce a resolution from the floor as a statement against the fast-tracked A4 legislation, along with hundreds of other municipalities who've spoken against it in a bipartisan effort. The bill is still moving forward, albeit with amendments, so we thought it would be very helpful to have Mr. Sarah give us an update tonight, specifically highlighting concerns about the bill, A4, how it impacts... Well, now it's S50, actually. How it impacts communities, what changes have been made, what we can do to potentially expect from the Senate bill, and how any of our community can advocate for... To make sure that this bill comes out with the best amendments possible. There will be a few minutes afterwards to ask questions. I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna keep the questions brief, though, because we do have our police here to give another presentation, so go ahead, and we will leave some time for questions. Okay?
Sure.
Do you see the clicker?
I have this...
Okay. Excellent.
Is it on on the slide?
Is it working?
Well, let's find out.
Okay. We'll help you.
Okay.
You just tell us.
Oh, so you have to do it up there?
Do you want me to sit over there while you take notes?
No.
Do you need to take notes?
No.
Okay.
So, you'll...
Yeah. Rosemary, the clerk is gonna...
Well, first of all...
Oh, it's not working?
Thank God my deputy's here.
Oh, I know.
Well, while they're doing that, I'll start.
Thank you.
And thank you to the Council President, to the mayor, and to the council members for the invitation to speak today. Kind of a hard act to follow with the promotions and the presentation we just witnessed. It's always good to come back to Union County just for informational... I'm a Union County native. Sorry, Mayor Fagan. And she will present on Women in the Progressive Era in Summit.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead and pull it. Yeah. Excellent. Just close it. Maybe bring it a little closer. There you go. That's perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Plousky, and thank you for having me. I'm so grateful to have this opportunity to be here today. The progressive era of the late 19th and early 20th century was marked by the avocation of social reforms, including the improvement of civic institutions, and calls for temperance and women's rights. In honor of Women's History Month in March, I wanted to highlight a few of the courageous Summit women at the forefront of the progressive movement. The women's club movement swept through the United States, in which women created clubs to propose solutions for societal problems in their local communities. Summit women were no exception. In 1893, Mary Buddington Wilcox founded the Four-Nightly Club, an all-exclusive women's club that met every two weeks to exchange opinions on the arts and ideas for Summit. A number of organizations, such as the Thrift Shop, the Family Service Association, and the Coral Society, were all created from members in the Four-Nightly Club. Similarly, the Four-Nightly Club also spawned the Town Improvement Association, of which Frances Twombly, also known as the Garbage Lady, was the president for the first 17 years. She worked to improve the cleanliness and garbage disposal for Summit, pioneering the eventual government involvement in public health. She was also known as the Mother of Recreation and raised money to create the playground in the Village Green in 1909. Furthermore, Bridget Lane was the first woman to hold a public position in Summit as the postmaster from 1886 to 1891 and 1894 to 1898. Named by President Grover Cleveland, residents questioned her appointment due to her gender. However, her soft-spoken nature quickly won her the support and respect of the community. Moreover, the Van Seis Building, today home to Wimbury's Restaurant, was once home to the local Women's Christian Temperance Union Headquarters. Willard Hall is named after Frances Willard, who served as the president of the WCTU and was one of the most celebrated women over time. She championed and fought for the temperance and women's rights movements. And the last woman I want to highlight is Augusta Larnard, the most famous female author to reside in Summit. And she lived on Blackburn Road for years and devoted her life to the fight for women's rights. She was a prolific writer for multiple newspapers, such as the New York Evening Post, and in 1870, she edited The Revolution, a periodical that focused on the enfranchisement of women. You can draw a direct line from these great female leaders in the progressive movement to many women today playing leadership roles across society. I want to congratulate Dr. Fagan for her election to mayor, and I've witnessed firsthand women across Summit leading everything from charitable organizations, businesses, and church efforts to our sports leagues. It has been fun to look back at some of the key women that have helped us get to these achievements. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. That was excellent. A good kickoff for Women's Month, so. Presentations. So we have a few presentations tonight. We are going to start with Michael Sarah, the Executive Director of New Jersey State League of Municipalities. I was going to have you raise your hand earlier. I was worried you weren't here. Michael Sarah is the Executive Director of the League of Municipalities. For those who are not familiar with the New Jersey League of Municipalities, it's a voluntary association created to help communities self-govern by pooling information and resources. It is volunteer, right? No pay? You do this for free?
Oh, no, no. This is...
Oh, it's paid. Okay.
No, this is my full-time job.
I was like, welcome to the group. Okay.
I do volunteer my communities.
Okay.
This is the paying...
Excellent. I was going to say, you're very generous coming here doing this. On February 5th, this council took the action to introduce a resolution from the floor as a statement against the fast-tracked A4 legislation, along with hundreds of other municipalities who've spoken against it in a bipartisan effort. The bill is still moving forward, albeit with amendments, so we thought it would be very helpful to have Mr. Sarah give us an update tonight, specifically highlighting concerns about the bill, A4, how it impacts commu... Well, now it's S50, actually. How it impacts communities, what changes have been made, what we can do to potentially expect from the Senate bill, and how any of our community can advocate for, to make sure that this bill comes out with the best amendments possible. There will be a few minutes afterwards to ask questions. I'm just going to say, I'm going to keep the questions brief, though, because we do have our police here to give another presentation. So go ahead, and we will leave some time for questions. Okay?
Sure.
Do you see a clicker?
I have this...
Okay. Excellent.
Is it on, on the side?
Is it working?
Well, let's find out.
Okay. We'll help you.
Okay.
You just tell us.
All right. So you have to do it up there?
Do you want me to sit over there while you take notes? Do you need to take notes?
No.
Okay.
So you'll...
Yeah. Rosemary, the clerk is going to...
Well, first of all...
Oh, it's not working?
Thank God my deputy's here.
Oh, I know.
Well, while they're doing that, I'll just, I'll start.
Thank you.
And thank you to the council president, to the mayor, and to the council members for the invitation to speak today. Kind of a hard act to follow with the promotions and the presentation we just witnessed. It's always good to come back to Union County, just for informational... I'm a Union County native, the other side of the county, but Union County nonetheless. I'm from Roseville. I'm a graduate of Roseville Catholic. I live in Mercer, down in Mercer County now, but this is home. I have relatives in the area, as I mentioned to you earlier. So I'm going to, a little breaking news on this, if you could go forward...
Yeah, great.
Is just as I entered the car, I was texted, "The Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee has scheduled a meeting this Monday." And hang out your hats, S50 and A4 are on the agenda. The, I don't know if you saw our notice today about the Transportation Trust Fund legislation. It is on the agenda to renew the TTF, and an open reform bill has been introduced and is on the agenda. So Monday should have to be a rather busy day, but I'm here to speak, and stay tuned, because you'll be hearing from us on all of those tomorrow. So if, can advance to why there is a bill. And it's important to note that the New Jersey Supreme Court, in its, in the original Mount Laurel decision, interpreted the state constitution as to require municipalities to provide a reasonable opportunity and put into place the zoning for a diverse range of housing. So that's the basis, really, of what we're dealing with, is that we have, there is a constitutional obligation and requirement for local governments. The Fair Housing Act, which passed in 1985, was the legislature's attempt to put in a mechanism for municipalities to meet that requirement. You think it's working? Which way?
There you have it.
Okay. All right.
And then the next one.
I'm controlling. I'll get it.
Oh, you...
We'll do the next page.
See, at home, I have to give it to my kid.
Okay.
So that's really why, one of the reasons why we're here. Why now is that the third round is expiring in about a year and a half, and July 2025, to be exact. And right now, the only means to comply with the affordable housing obligations is to seek a judgment of reposed from the courts. COA has been defunct for a number of years, the agency created by the Fair Housing Act, the Council on Affordable Housing. So that was the administrative alternative for municipalities to meet their obligations. It no longer functions, so your only option has been go to the courts. So that, this is meant to be the replacement, essentially, for COA. So the major provisions of this legislation, COA is abolished. The duties and functions of the agency would be split between the Department of Community Affairs and the Administrative Office of the Courts. The Department of Community Affairs would run the numbers using the methodology. I'm going to talk about the methodology, because that's the major concern, I think, that a lot of towns have. But DCA is charged with running the methodology and the numbers, and right now, the Administrative Office of the Courts handles any disputes. The methodology is, to calculate the need, is based on a unpublished court decision out of Mercer County by Judge Jacobson, which was the last of the methodology litigations in the last round, and kind of formed the basis of, there were really two competing precedents, and the Jacobson methodology was viewed as being the more reasonable of the two. Under the bill, each municipality actually sets its own obligation number. COA runs the numbers, the methodology, based on that, but a municipality, based on other factors, can adjust it either up or down, based on, you know, environmental concerns. It does have to get approved through what's called the program. The availability of bonus credits, which I won't go into great length about, has been expanded upon the original bill, with a whole host of bonus credits for municipalities. However, a major category of bonus credits, rental bonuses, has been removed, which is obviously a concern. On February 8th, the Assembly Appropriations Committee did a number of amendments, significant amendments, and generally positive. We're a couple of slides ahead, I don't know if you're... The amendments from the committee basically were in response to concerns of the league, the conference of mayors, and a lot of local officials were raised. Major areas in the amendments included legal protections, so that a town's plan is certified is, has the presumption of validity, that compliance with the Act, with the Fair Housing Act, is deemed to be compliance with the Mount Laurel Doctrine. Age restricted housing, the cap on it is increased from 25% to 30%, clearer criteria for the agency, and requiring the issuance of certification if the municipality essentially hits all the checks on the checklist. New credits, which I won't go into great depth with, a series of credits and bonuses available to municipalities on a wide range of issues, but they're in the PowerPoint, but I, in the interest of time, I won't go on about it. But essentially, you know, the committee amendments were a positive step, but obviously, everyone understood there were still remaining issues with the bill. It passed the Assembly a couple of days later. That was their plan. They were going to, the Assembly was committed to moving on the bill quickly and pushing it to the Senate to act. As I mentioned, now, there's a Senate committee meeting on Monday that will consider the bill. We anticipate more amendments. I can't tell you what those amendments are yet or not. I can tell you what, you know, what we've told them, what we think it should be, and some of the areas. So I'll highlight the major ongoing issues that I've heard, because I've done this, a similar presentation throughout the state, the county leagues, the other councils, and this is really kind of what we're hearing back from towns, is, one is the methodology. Everyone wants the methodology, the determination of the number, to be predictable and fair. One of the issues right now that we're hearing from planners who are trying to run these numbers is that the data available, not all the data is available. The Census no longer publishes some of the tract data that was used in the Jacobson ruling. It isn't, we don't know if the Census Bureau has it and doesn't publish it, or if it isn't available yet. So that has to be resolved one way or another, whether through amendment or identification of other data that could be used. But obviously, not only that, do we need a way for it to be predictable and fair, we also want to make sure the numbers are sustainable. I've heard from a number of towns' concerns about vacant land adjustments. When you actually, and a vacant land adjustment is exactly what it sounds like, is when you get an adjustment based on, you know, the availability of land. There's language in here that would require 25% of that obligation to carry forward. If you're landlocked, that might be, that could be a problem. And I think a lot of towns have done overlay zonings, are running into that concern. There is some concern about clarifying that the responsibility for the municipality is to zone. Your obligation isn't to build, but it's to put the zoning in place to allow for the construction and the development, but you actually don't have an affirmative obligation to act, to build. And there's some concern about some of the language. The sponsors swear that's not the legislative intent, so hopefully, you know, that can be clarified. The, you know, attorneys, you know, are there any land use attorneys in the room? They'll probably talk about the 1,000-unit cap. There's language in there that, there's a cap for both your prior round and your future need. Can't be more than 1,000 units in total. The language in the bill undoes that. I think there's a good opportunity, based on recent court precedents, that that may be amended going forward and corrected. There are a number of environmental concerns. The Highlands Act, and how the Highlands Act would correspond, is environmental issues, municipalities with environmental constraints. How do you deal with the vacant land adjustments and so forth? And just the infrastructure demands of development, funding, you know, the additional planning requirements in addition to housing, environmental constraints, and stormwater and so forth. Where's the funding for that, you know, place on these demands? So generally, those are the larger categories and concerns that we're hearing. We brought the, you know, we have raised these concerns with both houses. I know municipalities such as yourselves have raised these issues as well. So I'm hopeful, we'll see, you know, where the Senate goes on this. I included in the PowerPoint the timeline. I'm short on time, so I'll leave it to that, but that's where you go forth. I mentioned in next steps, the Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee. The committee roster is there. This is the committee that will be hearing this bill and those other bills on Monday. If you, I would, you'll be in touch with your legislators, particularly in the Senate, to raise the concerns that you have and engage. I don't know how this is going to play out, because, you know, rumblings are that maybe the Assembly and the Senate are in different places on this. Are they going to be, and I don't know if they're going to be able to reconcile this all in five days. And then after that, there's a whole other week before the Senate would vote, so there's another, a week of, you know, back and forth. So I'm not sure at this point how this will happen. Obviously, there's, some of the sponsors would like to put this to bed before the legislature goes on budget recess, but it's important to get it right. And this has been a, at times, a sprint, you know, since these bills were introduced in December and then reintroduced in January. But it's important, you know, not to get it fast, but to get it right. And I think, you know, engagement of local officials and citizens to talk to the legislators so we're heard, and I don't, you know, I don't, there's such a perfect bill, but obviously, the objective is to wind up with a better product than we have now, whether it be a week and a half from now, a month from now, next year. But obviously, the objective is not to repeat the third round, if at all possible, because the court process in the third round, I think, just but every municipality found to be rather costly, inefficient, and ineffective. So we'll hope that that's not the best option going forward. These amendments and other work and time will tell. So with that, I'll just, if anyone has any questions or comments, I'll do my best to answer. If I can't answer it, I will follow up with you as well.
Thank you. That was excellent. And I just want to say, so Mr. Sarah is not an affordable housing attorney. He is an advocate.
I am not. Nor did I write the bill.
Yep.
So don't shoot the messenger.
So I just want to make sure that when we go do our questions, that we keep that in mind. I'm going to give council members an option to ask a question now. I'm asking that we keep our questions somewhat brief if we can, because I'd like to be able to get to the public also to ask some brief questions. So I'm going to start at this end. Should I just work my way around? Councilman Plousky, do you have a question?
You just mentioned an obligation to build. That there's some, maybe not confusion, but debate over whether this new version will have an obligation to build.
Right. The sponsors, I've specifically raised that issue, have stated that that's not the legislative intent, that the obligation is to zone. A number of land use attorneys have felt that the language in the bill could be interpreted differently, so we're hoping that cleanup language will reside in the amendments to make you clear that you, that the obliga... Whatever your number is, your obligation is to zone, not to build.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hamlet?
Mike, thank you very much for coming.
Pleasure.
I appreciate it. I'm just going to, a couple of things I jotted down. I would assume, since you represent the League of Municipalities, the assumption is that you represent the City of Summit, correct?
Correct.
Correct. I would make to make it perfectly crystal clear that, at least for myself personally, I think this legislation is one of the worst things that's ever going to happen to New Jersey. It's my opinion that this legislation will devastate New Jersey. One of the reasons that some of my colleagues are up here and got elected is because they spoke up against overdevelopment. You mentioned that the amendments were significant and generally positive, but I would argue that they certainly haven't gone far enough. And I think that's one of, at least this municipality's concern. I'd be curious to know if the League of Municipalities has identified which exact number of municipalities are inherently against this, because it's easy to say, we talked to some municipalities and they think this, but it would be really interesting to get an actual concrete number. You know, I do not think that municipalities should be compelled to bear additional burdens if a municipality seeks to satisfy some of its fair share through traditional inclusionary housing with zoning 20%, and developers just choose not to take advantage of that zoning. What's even more concerning is how this bill would handle towns like Summit, as you had mentioned, with a vacant land adjustment. Many towns fit into this category from round three, and many more will have in round four, because more towns will have insufficient land to meet a higher fair share. If the new bill is passed by the Senate and signed by the governor, as you know, land poor municipalities will have to adopt realistic zoning for satisfaction of at least 25% of their unmet need. And I think that's probably one of the biggest concerns with this bill, in my opinion. So I thank you for coming. I know it's not much of a question, but I think that my takeaway is that the league represents the City of Summit. And I think, as a whole, our council believes this is devastating to New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Miniker?
No, thank you for the update.
Appreciate it.
Great. Councilman Vartan?
Sure. I think a lot of the concerns that you spoke about, about the legislation itself, I think, are things, when taken one at a time, like add up, right, to increasing the possibility that Summit's likely to face a builder's remedy lawsuit, right? So number one would be, I think, for the people watching, you know, can you just explain to folks what that is? And number two, what amendments you think might be able to be made that would possibly avoid or mitigate that risk for Summit?
Well, a builder's remedy litigation is a court-created tool, mechanism, in which if a developer, for instance, can challenge your compliance, a municipality's compliance with the Fair Housing Act by suing and, you know, essentially proposing a change in zoning or likely, it's usually more, you know, density, you know, high inclusionary zoning, as you mentioned, to compel, to really drive obligation. You know, I think the legal protections that were in the assembly amendments addressed this issue to some extent, that if you were deemed compliant, that you have a presumption of validity, which is the same language that was consistent with COA substantive certification, that you can always be sued, and you can't, yes, America, you can't stop someone from suing litigation, but the presumption of validity carries some weight. I'm sorry, so what was the second?
Just if the amendments, or if there are other amendments that you can think of, could mitigate Summit's risk, right? Like, I think, I think for the people watching, the builder's remedy lawsuit is kind of the nightmare scenario, because it takes away control from the city. And I think, to what extent, you're confident or you feel like there are things that could be added or changed to the bill that address that issue?
Well, I think that the list that I provide, I think, all can mitigate. Like I said, you could, you, there's always a risk and of being sued or being challenged, but one, if the methodology is grounded in reality, and it can be predicted and is fair, that's one step. The concern about the VLAs, the vacant land adjustments, is another. The clarification, you know, the clarification that the obligation is to zone. You could put the zoning in place, but if the market doesn't build, that's not on the municipality. That's just the market dictating, you know, what people want. So I think, I really think it's a combination of potentially a number of amendments. I don't know if there's, I don't, if this legislation goes, and again, you know, but, you know, it's anyone's guess at this point. There's no 100% certainty. It's just, hopefully, there's means to comply and protections within the bill to offer some surety that maybe you don't have now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Boyer?
You know, the first thing I think about is numbers. And I know the bill hasn't, we're not there yet, right? But you may have some sort of idea in terms of numbers that we, that's foreseeable in the future of a town like Summit.
I'm hesitant to guess, because there's data not available. So I don't know, I don't know if numbers could actually be generated. I mean, you know, I, somebody, you know, somebody told me a while ago that if you, because the third round was actually 26 years crammed into 10, because of what was called the gap period, and the fact that COA couldn't adopt regulations for over a decade. You know, one quick way to do it is divide what your number, your total number was by 26, and then multiply it by 10. You know, I don't know if that's, I don't know what weight that carries at this point. I don't know, based on the methodology that's in the bill, I don't know, right at this point, we can, numbers can be calculated. That's one of the flaws here, is that, you know, we want it to be predictable and fair, among other things. You know, we don't know if it's fair, because it can't be predicted. So I can't tell you, I really couldn't tell you what your number is. I know, you know, some folks have attempted, in good faith, to project what those numbers would be. I, you know... So I can't tell you, I really couldn't tell you what your number is. I know, you know, some folks have attempted, in good faith, to project what those numbers would be. But it's with that caveat, that the date, some of the data that's needed to make those determinations isn't available yet.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you very much for coming. I'm sure your last two weeks have been very busy, going from council meeting to council meeting, so I appreciate you being here. I just had one question. You'd mentioned there is an increase in age restricted from 20 to 30%?
Right.
Okay. So I think that's actually a positive.
Right. It is, it is. There was a, one bill has, one house had a 25, the other house had a 33, they landed on 30. Well, again, but that was an Assembly Committee amendment. One of my concerns is, you know, we got some positive changes, we need more, didn't go far enough, but we also have to kind of defend a rear flank, because some of those positive changes could, you know, are under attack by some of the adversaries to the bill, too. So, you know, while we're trying to advance more reform and get it in better shape, if it ever becomes law, we also have to kind of defend the rear flank, that some of those changes like that are, you know, could be vulnerable.
And just to clarify, that age restricted, is there a specific age? Is it 55 and over, 60 and older over, or is that determined by the municipality?
I believe it's 55 and over de-restricted. But I can verify that for you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I am going to go to the public, so I'm just going to ask that when you come up, ask a question. This isn't, hopefully, not a three-minute speech, only because I would like everybody to get as much of an opportunity to ask a question. So you stay.
Okay.
Yeah, because they'll ask you the question.
All right.
Oh, but that's probably not working. So I guess if, you know, you stayed next to them, and then the first person, if you guys could, who would like, with a show of hands, who would like to ask a question? Anybody? Nobody? Oh, I'm so surprised. Okay.
I board everyone, or I have to?
No, you were very thorough. Well, then I'll leave you with this. First of all, thank you so much for coming. I'll say that Summit, prior to this council, I've heard it for many, many years, that Summit has always done their effort to be inclusionary since the '60s. They built, you know, since the '60s, not in the '60s, but Chestnut, Weaver, Glenwood. We've partnered with Habitat for Humanity. So I think that we, as a community, have really tried to do the best. The current legislation that concerns me is that we don't have the methodology, that there's, it's a little tricky with the certifications, because every time you get certified, there's another hurdle, and every time that you go through that hurdle, it can be challenged. And that's where you end up back in the courts. So to your point, like what we've gone through this year with the courts, we can just be in the same place. But, and it's really important to note that anybody that talks about affordable housing, you can be an affordable housing advocate and an environmentalist at the same time. They shouldn't be mutually exclusive. We should talk about how do we take care of our environment and our people, too. So being able to look at infrastructure, being able to look at the schools and everything else, I think even Governor Murphy had said, we're very concerned with all the flooding and so forth. The stormwater is really, managing that is important. So I want to thank you for your time. What can people do as an action? Can they go on Monday?
You can go on Monday. Go to the City Legislature's website. It's a 10 o'clock hearing.
Okay.
Anyone who's coming, but be prepared.
It's going to be full.
It could be, it's going to be full, because there's a whole, it's a long agenda, it's going to be a long committee hearing. That committee has a habit of not starting on time. You start on time, but they don't.
They don't.
Trending time is completely different. So be prepared. But I don't know if, I know the Assembly allows you to electronically register a position. I'm not sure if the Senate does, but I can check that, I can let you know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But folks who couldn't make it, but want, I can even leave this slide.
Yep. You believe this, and actually, I'll have Ms. Karens, we'll put it on the website for everybody. And if anybody wants to Google NewJerseyLegislature.org, it's...
Right. It's the Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee.
Yeah.
It's meeting Monday at 10:00 a.m.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. And everybody out there in the room and on HTV, we hope that you go on Monday. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Drive safe.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We're going to, oh, not yet. We're going to do the presentations, and then we'll do public, for public comment, you were talking about, okay. We're going to do the presentations first. Come on up. Yeah. Excellent.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Yes.
Appreciate it. So the Summit Police Department is here tonight to announce two exciting programs that we stole from other police departments, to address some of the concerns here in town. Borrowed. I think we do have a brief video, though, that's going to go over the home security assessment program. May answer a few questions before we dive into the presentation, so we'll start with that. Rosie?
Thank you.
In response to the recent increase in burglaries and car thefts in our community, Summit Police Department is proud to introduce the Home Security Assessment Program. This free service is designed to help residents of Summit improve the security of their homes and vehicles. Our trained officers will visit your home at a time that's convenient for you. They will conduct a thorough assessment of your property and check for potential issues like weak locks, poor lighting, or unsecured windows. After the assessment, you'll receive a report with personalized recommendations for enhancing the security of your home. This may include tips on stronger locks, installing motion sensor lights, or setting up security cameras. There is also a checklist online for people who want to improve their home security without scheduling an assessment. The Summit Police Department is committed to your safety and peace of mind. Together, we can build a safer community. To schedule your free home security assessment, contact the Summit Police Department today or visit CityofSummit.org/polic.
So for those of you that know me, that's probably the slowest I've ever spoken in my life.
Drinking warm water before bed balances glucose levels overnight.
That's not ours.
It's very important.
That's not ours.
That was mine. I snuck that in there. So we do have a quick presentation, just to highlight some of the, some of the goals of the assessment program. As recently, as stated in the video, this program was created to address some of the concerns from our residents. So the purpose of it is to have us go out at your request to do an assessment of your home and your property. Some of the areas, Rosie, if you can go to the next slide, please. That's the last slide? Perfect. So some of the things we'll be looking at on the exterior of the house is whether or not you have proper lighting, some vegetation growth that could block your, the view from the windows, whether or not their windows and doors have appropriate locking mechanisms. Cameras, obviously, in 2024 are one of the things that a lot of people have, but can be financially infeasible for, not practical for some people. But essentially, it's a free service that we're providing to our residents. We put five of our officers through American Crime Prevention Institute, offers an online certification process. This isn't something that we just rushed into. We make sure all of our officers were certified. They're also certified to do home security assessments, business assessments, and school security assessments as well. So we will be diving into those markets as time goes on. And again, the purpose of it is to identify potential security weaknesses and areas of improvement, and make cost-effective recommendations on ways to increase and improve security for your house. Next slide, please. Some of the things that are on the checklist, like I referenced before, is the house number easily visible from the street? Not only is that important for when you order Uber Eats, but also for when you contact the police department. One of the things, especially in the City of Summit, we do have some bigger properties. It is difficult for us to see as police officers at night some of the numbers on the houses, so we always advocate to have them closer to the curb. Is your driveway equipped with motion activation lighting? Does your home have an alarm system? Does the front doorbell, do you have a camera on the front doorbell? Do all exterior doors have deadbolt locks? These are just a variety of things that we're going to be looking at. And for those people who do not want a police officer to come out, because some people don't want a police officer to come out, walk through their property, we do have this checklist uploaded to the city's website, and they could do their own security assessment and give themselves a self-evaluation. If you can go to the next slide, Rosie? And some of the other things that we recommend is lock in doors and windows and turn on exterior lights, or set on a timer when you're away. Cancel all deliveries while on vacation, or ask a friend or trusty neighbor to collect them regularly. Avoid leaving mail or packages outside for extended periods, and make sure all garage doors and side gates are closed and locked. One of the other things that I've done at my house is make sure that the interior door from the garage to the house is locked as well. If we can go to the next slide. It's a simple registration process, so Officer Katiga is here. He mans our community services unit. All we ask is that you just email your name, address, phone number, and a preferred day and time. With that information, we can minimize the amount of back and forth that we need to communicate with you, because we are anticipating this is going to be a pretty popular program. I think we went live this afternoon, just after lunch, and we already had 50 requests. So I'm anticipating after this stellar performance tonight, we'll have quite a few more tomorrow. So that's the first program that we have brought to the city. I think we're going to address the second program as well, and then maybe we'll take some questions. The second program is going to be our drone unit. So it's our unmanned aircraft systems unit, again, headed by Sergeant Button and Officer Katiga. The purpose of this is a variety of things. So over the course of the last few years, several police departments have dove into this unmanned aircraft systems units. If we can go to the next slide? So one of the reasons we brought this is because as technology advances, we, I at least firmly, we as an administration firmly believe that the Summit Police Department needs to stay on the spear of the cutting edge for this technology. So Officer Katiga, when introduced to this program, he went all in, 110%. I'm getting videos and pictures from his wife of him flying the drone around the house, not this drone, his own personal drone, of course. But I can't speak highly enough of our four officers that are currently certified. They did pass the FAA Part 107 certification process. In addition, totally different COA than the housing, but we did receive a certificate of authorization to fly through the FAA as well. We are in Class G airspace, which pretty much leaves us unrestricted. One of the concerns that we had was overlook hospital, because occasionally, they do get the helicopters that come in and out, but we did establish a protocol with them. So if they're ever having someone coming in, or we're launching our drone, we'll be in constant communication. One of the things that Officer Katiga, could we just go back one more time? Officer Katiga is just going to highlight some of the features on our drone. It's the DJI Matrice 30T.
Thank you, Captain Peters. Yeah, I was told to keep brief, so I will. I can go on for a while, yeah. They're going to play the Oscar music for me. All right. So this is the DJI Matrice 30T, that T at the very end there, that's very important, that stands for thermal. This drone operates on a dual battery system. It's been actually called the Perfect Search and Rescue Drone. That's in the drone community, and it's for a number of different reasons, based on its power, its portability, and its reliability. And I'm going to highlight some features of it. So weighs about 14 pounds roughly, has a 41-minute flight time. Now granted, that's in optimal weather conditions, which we will take into account prior to deploying the drone. Wind is a major factor, has 33 mile-per-hour wind resistance, it can reach top speed of 51 miles an hour, not that we ever plan on doing that. Operating temperature, negative 4 degrees to 122 degrees, so that's not an issue. There's a laser rage finder, once again, infrared or thermal technology, or imaging, I should say. One of the things, it has a 48-megapixel camera, 4K live video feed, that we can actually send out a live video link to our command personnel, supervisors, officers on the ground to help, you know, enhance communication, increases officer safety and such. One of the things, it has also 200 times zoom capabilities. Well, what does that mean, right? That basically, we set this drone up, Sergeant Button and I in the back parking lot here at City Hall, and we focused the camera down towards the new fire department. So that's roughly almost about a half mile away, and we're able to zoom in and clearly see license plates. That's the capabilities of this drone. It's very impressive. So, next slide, Rosie?
Yeah, so as I previously stated, all, to mitigate liability. So I'm not saying which departments, but some other departments roll these out and kind of say haphazardly, who knows how to fly a drone, let's get it up in the air. Summit, that's not how we roll. So to mitigate any liability, to make sure that we're providing the best service possible, we made sure all of our officers got FAA Part 107 certified. That was no easy task. Some of the studying material I saw in there, I was blown away, and again, I have the knowledge to oversee the program, but I have no interest in the knowledge that they have at this point. All four of our operators either live in town or live in one of our neighboring towns, so that makes the response time when, during the overnight hours fairly quick. As previously stated, they underwent an in-depth equipment training. Aside from the Part 107 certification, each officer is required to put four hours of time in flying the drone before using it on actual operations. We're logging flight time, hours, and then the software that comes with this drone, it pretty much logs everything. So after an operation, we have what the weather was, the flight time, the areas of which were covered. Officer Katiga probably can speak to more of this than me, but essentially, anything that you would want to know from a flight is going to be recorded and memorialized in a document.
Everything gets logged there.
Everything gets logged. And we already spoke with the Joint Insurance Fund, we're fully covered through the insurance with this thing, so we're good to go. We launched this about a month ago, we've already had four or five successful operations. Did you want to say something? I saw you grabbed the microphone.
No, well, you were talking about how we're working closely with the FAA, too, because we have to report back to them, basically on a monthly basis, all of our drone data. So if we flew it five, six, seven times this month, all that data needs to be reported back to the FAA that's in accordance with our COA.
Yep. And the next slide, Rosie? So some of the reasons we might deploy this, so search and rescue, as stated by Officer Katiga. We deal with these calls all the time. Missing juveniles, missing endangered adults, elderly people, we do have several facilities in town that house elderly. We have had, unfortunately, a few walk away, and this could be a great tool for us for search and rescue as well. Persons on train tracks, and again, the ability to scour, because we can go up to a 400-feet ceiling, so we can scour and view more terrain from that elevation than we could with, I couldn't, a few dozen people on the ground. Next slide, please. Suspects at large. So, you know, this is important for law enforcement. So if there's a pursuit in the area, oftentimes, these pursuits end with motor vehicle accidents and people running off in the backyards. So to have this readily available for our officers as a tool, with the thermal imaging, again, brings a bird's eye view of the area. And as Officer Katiga had referenced, every time this thing gets launched, we have specific groups, so depending on the operation, they get notified, the chief, myself, and Captain Tribeber get notified. Every time this thing goes up, we get a text message, and then wherever we are, we can click on that link, and we can view the live feed of what these guys are doing. It was a great day when they were testing this, because I was getting constant text messages from the administrative staff, what are these drone guys doing? Like, I'm getting text messages.
Have to test it.
So we tested it, everything worked out great. And again, it increases officer safety and a greater likelihood for apprehension. Next slide, please, Rosie? We've already been out on one, any working fires to assist the fire department. It has thermal imaging, working with other police departments where we, you know, kind of pick their brains on why they use it. Cranford used this, actually, in a structure fire, where the fire department saw smoke, they were having difficulty finding where the hotspot was, and they sent the drone up, and were able to identify that and subdue that fire pretty quickly.
So, this is actually, sorry to cut you off. This is actually a photograph from the recent fire in Elizabeth, I believe it was Trumble Street, early January. This one, this is an actual image from there. Once again, there, Elizabeth Police Department's drone unit was out for three solid days, working with, closely with the fire department, their command personnel, like Captain Peters just said, identifying hotspots where they can better deploy their personnel.
Next slide, please, Rosie? Natural disaster response, again, one of the departments that we visited was Cranford, which unfortunately is prone to flooding, and we found that, because initially, our thought process is, you know, suspects and missing persons. But come to find out, they assisted their city in patrolling neighborhoods, because their neighborhoods were flooded. They had no way of getting down certain streets and identifying what the damage was, what the needs were for the residents, and maybe possibly even communicating with those residents. So this is a tool for the entire city, and being at the OEM quarterly meeting, I advise that the fire department, DCP, DCS, as long as it's within compliance of our COA, will deploy for any department in the city. Next slide, please. Traffic incidents, obviously, with Route 24 and Route 78 that come through our town, we do, unfortunately, do see some major traffic incidents in the area, and this can just assist not only with traffic support, but also the investigative purposes of that. Next slide, please. And large crowd and event monitoring. And large crowd and event monitoring, so the Fourth of July is always, you know, it's always, um, difficult for us to manage, uh, manpower-wise. You have thousands of people and a few dozen police officers to manage that, so that, again, this is just another tool in our toolbox to deploy, uh, national night out, uh, car shows, village green events, um, so it will be able to give us a kind of a better understanding of what we're dealing with. Uh, next slide, and that's pretty much it, so we're here for questions if anybody has any.
Excellent, thank you, that was fantastic. Okay, um, any council member comments, questions?
Yeah, quick one.
See it over here, if anybody needs one.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, yeah, thank you for this presentation. Um, my quick question here, I'm going back to the security assessment, uh, thing, the, do you have any requirements or adaptations for residents who want this security assessment, but who are renters, uh, not necessarily in large, larger renter rental complexes, but in say rented houses?
No, I don't think we have any reservations about that.
Well, one of our, uh, one of our requests today, yeah, well, actually, one of our requests today was, uh, without giving the exact address, one of the apartments. I have no problem going out there and taking a look at the current, uh, security situation. Apartments are just as liable to get broken into just as any home. So I have no problem going out there, I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't turn anybody down for that.
And in addition, houses for rent, I mean, at that time, at that point, the tenant is, is the homeowner, right? That's their house, that's their dwelling, so, um, and I'm, I'm assuming that if they're going to be making any changes, they'll be consulting with their landlord before they start swapping out locking mechanisms and heading lighting.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, anyone else?
Yeah, I, you know, I just, I just wanted to say, uh, you know, congratulations, I mean, I, I, I think the, the drone is amazing, um, you know, good for thinking, uh, with the, the housing assessments is great, uh, you know, I want to thank you both, I also want to thank the chief. Uh, I know I, we've, we've been working together and, uh, he's been, um, he's been, he's been dealing with me pretty, pretty well, you know, so, uh, you know, but good job, guys. I mean, I, I think Summit PD is the, the best police department, I'm, I know I'm biased, but the best police department in New Jersey, so good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, actually, through your council president.
Oh, I'm going to let Councilman Plasky first and then back to you.
Yeah, so, um, how much, how much do you, uh, do you get to play, I mean, have to practice?
Well, as, uh, as, as Captain Peters mentioned earlier, I do own my own personal drone, so I had a little bit of experience, nothing major, uh, this puts my personal drone to shame. This, like I said, this is a major piece of equipment, is extremely impressive, I don't think we begin to scratch the surface of its full capabilities. You've seen, uh, some of those images up there earlier, say suspects at large, that's the image that we see, stands out like a sore thumb, you ever, somebody read, picks up heat signatures, the thermal camera greatly assists in our ability to, uh, either capture a suspect or locate a missing person. So how much experience do I have? Uh, now quite a bit, now quite a bit of experience.
What's required for our pilots? It's quarterly, three, three flights, three events per quarter?
Yeah, three events per quarter, exactly.
That's the minimum requirement to maintain, but we also set the standard of four hours of flight time, which is actually a lot.
We're actually way beyond those three events per.
So we have to, the, the drone takes two batteries at any given time, and those two batteries will get you the maximum of the 41 minutes, I think it was in the air. But we do have additional sets of batteries, so if we needed to, and if the operation was still going, we could then pull it down, swap out the batteries and go right back up.
Well, that's the benefit of the dual battery system that, that this operates off of. It can come down, we can bring it down, swap, do, they call it a hot swap. You swap out the batteries without having to power down the drone, or let's just say, if there's a failure of one battery, the other battery has enough power juice to bring it back to us safely.
The software inside the drone, uh, knows the battery capacity, and it knows where the remote control is, so if it identifies that the wind is kicking up and it's not going to have enough battery to return home, regardless of what pilot Katiga says, it's going to return home. It's going to start flying its way back to the pilot to make sure that it doesn't just land somewhere, it has that technology in it, so.
Correct, and, uh, actually, one of, I think, is a pretty impressive, uh, I guess, feature on this, it has a return to home function, what, what they call, so at any point we can press that, that button, that return to home function, it takes off from this point, it lands at this point. How precise is it? It, it, it's amazing, actually, so.
And one other thing, every time this, I know we're running out of time with it. Um, one other thing, um, is our, our pilots don't fly alone, there's, there's always a spotter next to them. So that's FAA requirement, where if Officer Katiga, he's piloting the drone, he's focusing on the software, he's focusing on the remote control, there'll be a second, what we call spotter next to him, making sure that nothing else is, is going to be interacting with our drone and keeping an eye on it. So if there's anything that introduces itself into the airspace, they'll know and notify Officer Katiga.
That's excellent. Okay, Councilman Miniger.
Real quick, uh, oh, you answered the question about returning to home, I was going to ask you about that, but you've mentioned multiple uses already, when did you buy this? How, how new is it?
So we got it in August, and it took a few months for our officers, again, the Part 107 was a little bit more difficult than we anticipated. Um, many, many study guides, uh, that these officers went through, we gave them anywhere between eight and 12 weeks to study. Once they got their certification, then we could then hang the certification on the COA application with this certificate of author, authorization to fly for the FAA. You need to have the Part 107 in order to apply for that, we then applied for that, and then the turnaround with the federal government was, it was actually, was actually shorter than anticipated.
Yeah, much quicker than.
But we did launch in January, and this is unfortunately our first time to get to kind of come up here and introduce it to you guys, but yeah, we have been out for over a month.
Thank you.
Excellent, anyone else? Councilman Smallwood?
So, thank you very much for this presentation, I was actually lucky enough to, uh, watch you practice at, uh, one point, and, uh, it is pretty amazing to watch, especially the, the thermal camera, because it's, if there ever is a, a missing child or person at, uh, at night, it, it certainly is going to be a tremendous help, so, um, and it was pretty cool watching it, because he, um, Officer Button did show me the, how the, the return to home feature, and it was literally, I, I, I mean, to the millimeter of actually where it took off, so it was, it was pretty amazing to watch, and thank you very much for doing this, and I think it's going to be a great help for, for us.
Appreciate it.
Excellent, and Mayor?
I just want to say I'm very, very pleased with both, both of these initiatives, and thank you guys, I know this has been a lot of work, um, getting this, got, been going, both of them, um, and so I'm really grateful to you guys, and I'm grateful to the chief, um, for getting, getting behind this, um, and also I just want to make sure that we're clear that we're not firing fireworks at the drone on Fourth of July.
No.
That wasn't, I don't think that's in the operations plan.
Awesome, thank you. Did everybody get an opportunity, Councilman Vartan? You're good, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Nope, okay, you're free to go.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks. I just want to do a check, if anybody needs to take a quick break, are we good to continue on? Anybody need a break?
I wouldn't mind five minutes.
Go ahead, no, no, we'll take, you know, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Okay, so we are going to, um, go to public comments, but before we go there, um, I wanted to make a statement, because, oh, sorry, um, during the last meeting, uh, several individuals came up to express their concern about the resident protection ordinance, and I'm going to let the city solicitor address the confusion on the legality of the ordinance, um, but I wanted to share just some thoughts of my own. So, as I've said, I've been on this dais since 2021, and one of the first meetings that I had, that I was in, um, was post the abduction of a young woman on Firdwood, and after that happened, um, this room was full with concerned residents. It was a mist already of high car theft, there were no home break-ins yet, but that caused a significant amount of alarm, of alarm in our community. So when we sat in that meeting and we listened to the residents, there was a lot of discussion around, take out your car, key fob, make sure that you're locking your cars, and the residents said, we can do that, but the concern is, what happens if they come into our home? And we were told, that won't happen. Um, so fast forward two years, almost three years later, people are coming into our homes. And I was on the Safety and Health Committee with, uh, Councilwoman Levine, and, um, at the time that we worked together, we had discussed a version of the ordinance that eventually came to what it, what it is now, which is the resident safety protection, it was in a much different version at that time. But in December of 2022, as head of safety, Councilwoman Levine had proposed a three-part plan to deal with the car thefts and crime in town and promote safety. The plan included the community pledging to bring in their key fobs and secure their key fobs, additional light plate, uh, license plate readers at various points of ingress and egress around Summit, and an ordinance that would allow the town to find criminals who trespass on property. So we didn't create this ordinance from a personal standpoint, we did not create this ordinance in a vacuum, it has been vetted over a long period of time, it has evolved and changed significantly. So I just want to put that out there, that we absolutely, absolutely vetted it through all the right people, again, I'm going to let the city solicitor answer that and give some timelines, um, but I think also what needs to be addressed is that I hear the concerns around what the ordinance and how the ordinance might impact certain individuals in our community, and we don't want that to happen. We are here to govern and make sure that everyone in our community is safe, and that's what we're working towards, and I felt like I really needed to establish that with everyone, that we are not here just to throw something together, we have been thoughtful around this, and we are going to do everything we can to make sure that safety is the top priority for every single resident in the city, okay? So without further ado, city solicitor Matt.
I'm a little distracted, because I want to go play with the drone, but I'll do, I'll do my best. So I, I was unfortunately not at the last meeting, I probably could have, uh, dispelled some of the misinformation, this did not come about in short order, this started in the fall of 2022. I represent Home Dell, I'm the labor attorney for Home Dell. Home Dell was one of the first towns to pass an ordinance that dealt with resident protections around the auto thefts. Similar to Home Dell, Marlborough, which we, my firm also does work for, uh, has similar ordinance, you guys should know that, uh, Chatham Township just passed a similar ordinance. And we looked at this carefully, I heard there's issues of preemption, we thought about that, you know, we're fully familiar with what preemption is, and what preemption is, is if there's a state law that speaks to it, it overrides a municipal ordinance. Well, that's why we have a severability clause in this, and it's, we put the severability clause in back in the fall of 2022, and we started this, knowing that somebody might attempt to argue preemption. So we have vetted this, I have talked to the attorneys in Marlborough, Home Dell, Chatham, other town attorneys have contacted us for copies of this, because I think what towns are looking to do, and this was a bipartisan effort, this was not a Republican, this was not a Denver, it was a bipartisan effort and a discussion, how can we give the Summit Police Department and your municipal prosecutors additional tools to help thwart car thefts in the city of Summit? And this is one of the tools, there's, you now have home checks, you have this drone, you have, I mean, there's, it's multifaceted to attack it, this is just one process. And I think people, you know, are, are concerned about the, the negative impact, but let me tell you a positive impact that comes with this, because very often, when you, if you do any type of criminal work, if you're dealing with the, the county prosecutor, um, and you're a first offender, defense attorneys look for ways to plead things down, because you know what's very bad for, for a young person to get on their record? A conviction. You're filling out a job application, have you been convicted of a crime? Well, that's a, a fairly onerous burden to overcome, and it can adversely affect you the rest of your life. It can preclude you from certain jobs, certain employment. So what this does actually, is it gives the county prosecutor and your municipal prosecutor the ability to plead something down, where it's a municipal ordinance violation. And I can tell you, many, many, uh, defense attorneys who represent defendants before, uh, courts, whether it is DWIs, the whole host of things, they look for municipal ordinance violations. So what happens is, this doesn't go first, if, 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 as the chief said previously, if somebody's actually charged with breaking and entering, this is basically an add-on. The whole, this goes down to the county, the county prosecutor deals with the issue, and we only deal with it if it's remanded back to municipal court. So if the county prosecutor says, we don't have enough to prosecute criminally, because to criminally prosecute somebody, it's a much higher burden of proof. This comes back down to municipal court, it gives, as opposed to letting somebody just walk away, not being prosecuted, this gives the municipal prosecutor and our police department the ability to have a consequence. This is a financial consequence, but it's a consequence. So it has been vetted, we're very comfortable with it, and the one thing I can tell you is I heard, you know, it's going to cost the city thousands of dollars. No, it's not, it's not going to cost thousands of dollars at all, because guess what? You can't file a challenge to this, because courts don't give advisory opinions. So the only way this is ever gets challenged is if a defendant challenges it, and guess what? We thought about it, because it has the severability clause, where a judge could easily say, well, I found that one aspect could be, uh, touched upon in the, um, trespassing, state 2C trespassing, and therefore I'm going to sever it. So this, this does not have a lot of exposure, but at the end of the day, what is the purpose of this? Why was this passed? Why was it looked at in 2022, throughout 2023, and we refined it throughout 2023? We heard, for example, people were worried about, um, houses in Summit that are close to the street, where people are parking on their driveway, but their car is fairly close to a public sidewalk. Well, if you look at the Home Dell ordinance, it talks about if you go near any car, if you're, if a car's parked on the street. This is limited to private property, this means somebody's got to go on your property and start trying to pull your car door, they're not just walking down the street or jogging. So we've tried to be cognizant of that, we also try to be cognizant of the fact that in, in Summit, you have apartment buildings, and what's behind the apartment buildings? Private parking lots, where the residents park their cars. They're entitled to the same protection as a private homeowner, just like we talked about, you know, would a renter be able to have, uh, his or her dwelling checked by the police? If you have a car and you're, and you're a renter, and you're parked behind something on Summit Avenue, your car should have the same protection as somebody who lives, uh, in, in, in the grandest house in Summit. And so we try to consider all that, and that's in this ordinance. Now, guess what? The reason that there's courts, and the reason there's the Palt divisions and Supreme Courts and, is you have the ability to amend this ordinance. So, uh, after, um, the council president meets with certain constituents, if they come back and say, we want to amend it, we think we can make it better, that's easy, we'll have a first reading, a second reading, and amend it. But the goal is, and, and I think that everyone should, is government's first priority, and really, when you, when you kind of distill it down to its basic form, government's most important priority is public safety, bar none, making sure the streets are plowed, there's not big potholes, you have police departments, if there's an emergency and you have a fire, fired, and so this is to help arm your police department and give them another tool to help, it won't prevent it, but thwart it or decrease it. And obviously, um, you know, I, I spoke to the municipal attorneys in both Marlborough and in Home Dell, theirs has, they've been in place for more than 18 months, they haven't had anybody challenge it for preemption, it's virtually almost identical, they don't have the home invasion aspect of it, but guess what? They're interested in it, because they too are having the same problem. And this is not just localized here, it's, it's literally statewide, uh, where, where people are coming into, uh, towns, um, and they're getting a little bit more aggressive in terms of trying to get those key fobs. So we're very comfortable with this, um, and finally, it's only, you know, the, the municipal prosecutor, the represent Summit, thinks it's a great idea. You heard the chief said, this is, this is, he's supportive of it, the police department's supportive of it, your municipal prosecutor's supportive of it, and thinks that it would be very helpful, uh, when dealing with attempted, uh, car thefts and attempted break-ins. So that's where we stand, and if somebody challenges it, we'll deal with it when that happens. We pass laws all the time, we write, we take legal positions all the time, we get challenged all, not just here, all over the place, that's what lawyers do. It's not too scary, I'm not performing brain surgery, so I can tell you, it's just not that hard. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jacoby. Okay, so we are going to, um, I thought you were going to say something, um, would you like to say something as the chair of safety, Councilman Boyer?
You know, I, I was going to ask, uh, the solicitor, uh, you know, there, there is a section of it, and I want to be kind of clear on this, that, um, a part of this ordinance as a summons, uh, can be issued without being arrested for a criminal action.
That's, that's absolutely correct, I mean, it, and I'm not going to do, the, the police have, you know, if you think about a police officer, they have a, a fairly arduous job, that's my favorite word, by the way, arduous, um, and that, when they're, when they're arresting somebody, detaining somebody, they have to remember all of their rights, um, and then they have to figure out, what are they, what are they charging the person with? Well, if they come across somebody that's on, uh, private property trying to get into the door handles, and they don't have enough to charge them criminally, this gives them something where they can issue a ordinance violation. And frankly, the more deterrents that you have in the city of Summit, or in any of these local municipalities around, guess what? Maybe the, the people who are deciding to steal cars will go to a different town that is not being so robust about it. The one good thing I can say, and I said this to the council before, was, there's been so much noise and talk about this, if I was a criminal, there's no way I'd come to Summit, you guys are, you guys are all, you're all crazy about this, so I think that that's a good thing, but, um, you know, the police, you're absolutely right, the police, it gives the, your police officers a, an additional tool, and frankly, if you have a first-time offender, somebody young, who, somebody who, this is their first time doing it, it gives the police the opportunity to say, you know what, I don't want to, I don't want to steer this child, or this kid, and a lot of these are kids that are being recruited to do these, these crimes, um, it gives them the opportunity to have kind of a, a first step before you even get into the world of 2C. 2C is the criminal statutes of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, so.
Can I say something? Since we're having a discussion now?
Okay, Councilman Vartan, you can say something.
I mean, so first of all, like I've said before, right? Nobody should be the victim of a crime. It's absolutely the most important role and responsibility of any government to keep people safe. That's number one. Number two is, we can, and we should, have debate, discussion, disagreement up here. I think the community does not want us thinking in lockstep, right? And, but, however, we can have those discussions and debates and disagreements if we all agree on the same set of facts and the same set of circumstances, right? So I just want to clear up a couple of things, right? So that's absolutely correct, that Jamie, Councilwoman Levine, mentioned up here in 2022, that we should look into this, right? And that's what happened throughout 2023. And that's great. I, as council president, did not want to advance that version of the ordinance. Number one, because I didn't think it was going to be effective. And number two, because I did not think that we adequately understood what the potential downsides of it were. So that's why we did not advance it and consider it as a full council last year. But there were two different things that we're talking about. Because last year, the ordinance only addressed cars. The ordinance that we're talking about now addresses cars and homes, right? So that whole piece about homes is a new addition this year, right? So there was a very, very short period of time between when that part about homes was introduced, council decided to move ahead with it and pass it, right? And we keep talking about amendments, and I think that that's great. I think the council president, I think the safety committee should discuss possible amendments to it, and what those should be, and outline what the timeline for that is. But I just wanted to be clear about a few of these things, so that people who are watching understand. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to give council members a chance. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Mr. Giacobi, for, for all your comments there. I think it's really important, and I think this ordinance is, is very solid. Can you please opine on the process last year, and going forward, if something is in committee, as a DAR, if something is in committee? My biggest argument last year was that we pulled it out of committee, and we didn't bring it back here. Because if, I think 66% of us agree that it shouldn't come out of committee or should be looked at again, what's the process for that?
Well, I think that the, the agenda is, the common council's agenda is controlled by the council president. And the council president works with the different committees to put things on the agenda. Ultimately, if there's an issue that, that the majority of the council wants to raise, they can ask at a meeting, I'd like to see this on the next council agenda, you can do that. With, and I can tell you, this was discussed at length throughout 2023. And I spoke with the, we had conversations with the chief, with the Public Safety Committee, researched different changes, I talked to different council members. I don't know why it wasn't ultimately brought, but, you know, as I said, it was a bipartisan effort, because I was dealing with, I dealt with yourself, I dealt with Ms. Allen, I dealt with former councilwoman Fox, Doc, Councilwoman Dr. Levine, all those folks I talked about, and it seemed that there was a lot of interest in this ordinance, or a version of it at the time. So, but in terms of the DAR, I think that, you know, the process is, is that basically each of the committees then makes recommendations to the full governing body, and that's your job to bring it up at a council meeting and make the recommendation, and then it would get onto an agenda.
Right. I think that, that's sort of my biggest concern with this. I think, Greg, to your point, if we would have had clear guidance from you last year on what you have identified as, as issues with that ordinance, then maybe we could have had some discussions last year on how we could have accomplished this ordinance in a better or more appropriate way. But it seemed as though the community just wasn't getting guidance on why this was coming out of committee and just being squashed.
So I think that whenever we're considering policy, right? Like, every committee is going to have to go through the process of determining whether it's something that makes sense to refer to the full council. I think everybody in here is right now working on things that are not ready for primetime, right? And we've talked about this a lot, where we can't always be saying, this is something that we're considering, but it's only half-baked, right? So, you know, I, I think, I think what we were focused on last year was ways that we could arm the police department to address crime, right? And to me, nobody still, still, nobody has made the case that it's effective anywhere else, right? Homedale, Marlborough, these places, how many times have they used it? We don't, we don't know that. Can we actually charge it? Can we actually charge juveniles? We don't, we don't really know that yet either. There are a lot of questions still remaining with this ordinance, right? And, and so that's why I think we have to take some more time and consider it before moving ahead. And I think, since we're meeting with community groups, and we're talking about addressing the concerns that have been brought up at the last three council meetings, those are the things that should have happened before you pass an ordinance, not after. That's my opinion.
Does anyone else want to speak? I, everybody has to have an opportunity to speak first once. Anybody? Okay. Councilman Smallwood?
Councilman Vartan, I, I agree with you 100% in terms of having the, you know, policy discussions among council. And when you have a situation where, you know, and obviously I was on council at the time, but when Dr. Levine brought this to, from her committee, you know, it's not always perfect in the committee. And I think that's where it should be brought to the council for an open dialogue and debate. And as Mr. Giacobi mentioned, that this is, it's not brain surgery. This is something that we can adjust, we can amend as time goes along, as we figure out what, something might be a better solution. But unfortunately, you made the decision on your own, as council president, not to allow that debate. Whether you're for it or against it, it is our job to make that policy decision and voice our own opinions as council members, whether you're for it or against it. You did not allow that. This is, and this is what we are allowing.
I think if you have the privilege of sitting in the center, one day you'll understand there's a big difference.
Okay. Councilman Vartan. Councilman Vartan. Councilman Boyer. Wait, I, hold on one second. I don't want to make a circus of this, this is an incredibly important issue, okay? Councilman Boyer.
So let me just clear something up, because, you know, I don't want to go back and forth, like emails, you know, with residents on it, and misinformation. We spoke to our city solicitor, we spoke to our municipal prosecutor, we spoke to law enforcement. This is a good ordinance. It's solid. What I keep hearing is that there are issues with it, we need to go back, we need to do this. This ordinance is solid. I don't understand why the back and forth needs to happen. I mean, listen, you can, you know, wrangle in your mind, oh, I need data on this, I need data on that. The police get a call, somebody's in your driveway, they're pulling your car handles. Guess what? You're going to get an ordinance. You're going to get a summons. All right? If you're trying to break into somebody's home, right? You're going to get arrested for trespassing. And you're going to get an ordinance, right? So I, listen, we, we got to stop with the misinformation, all right? We did our due diligence. And the fact is, I am a professional. I spent over 20 years in security and law enforcement. And, you know what, and it's, and it's pretty disturbing that people come up here and they say, oh, you didn't do your due diligence, you didn't do, I do this for a living. I mean, so stop with the politics. I'm not up here because I'm a politician. I'm up here because I care about the people in Summit. I'm not up here to get reelected. I wouldn't run for office anywhere else. I grew up in this town. Why would I ever do anything to put anybody in jeopardy in this town? And the whole racial tension about people, you know, you can't put this out because, in, in Black History Month, because black people have been lynched? I mean, give me a break. The fact is, people come up here, and they act, and they say things like, oh, you didn't vet this out with the community. What, I'm not black? We had people from the Anti-Racism Committee sit over here and, and say jokingly that I'm not a black man. And we sit around, because another black person said it to me, nobody's going to question that, right? Had it been the other way around, and a white man said that to somebody that was black, everybody would be up in arms. But because it's me, nobody says anything. Now, I love this town, and I want to be respected here on the dais, like everybody else. Now, all this back and forth, I mean, I mean, how many times can we say it? And I'm sorry I'm getting emotional, but hey, when I'm sitting up here and people are referring to my race, I take it highly offensive.
Three, Council President.
Councilman Miniger.
Another word for back and forth is debate, and that's completely normal. Mr. Giacobi, I have a question for you. Do you know that the Westfield ordinance had, did not have a, sorry, did not have a severability clause?
I have no idea what Westfield, I talked, I talked to Homedale.
I mean, the one that, the one that was talked about at the last meeting. Did that have a severability clause in it? I mean, just out of curiosity.
I, I have, no, I didn't check that ordinance. Are you talking, so the case that was talked about, and the case that was relied upon, that was a loitering case, that, very different than this. I think that this, when you look at it, these are, the, the language that was used, and I can tell you, I, I refined the language based on what was initially requested because of preemption. But again, the severability clause, you remember, you've got multiple parts to this ordinance. And so I'm confident that this ordinance will survive in total, but even if a little part gets struck, the majority of it will survive. And you know what? What's the worst thing that happens? The worst, and I learned this a long time ago, I remember, one of the first cases I lost, I was distraught, I couldn't believe I lost a case. And a senior partner calls me into the law library, we used to have law libraries with lots of books. He goes, Ken, look at those books, what are in there? I said, decisions. He goes, yeah, and every one of those decisions, somebody won and somebody lost. Get over it. Well, you know what? If a judge says, I don't think this is right, well, refine it. There's nothing wrong with trying, because you can do the old paralysis by analysis, and you do nothing. And so doing something, and I think that this has been vetted carefully, and looked at case law, et cetera, and I looked at all the different cases, I think the language here, it does not infringe on or mimic exactly the, the criminal statutes. This is a step before. This is ancillary to the criminal statutes. But again, the severability clause is in there for just that reason, so that you don't obviate the entire ordinance, should a judge say it's severed. And guess what? Trial judge might say it's severed, and then the appellate division might say, no, it's not. And then you go to the Supreme Court. I mean, I've been up through the, the system many, many times, on many cases. And I think that, you know, the way these ordinance work, and I can tell you, that both Homedale and Marlborough, there has been a challenge. So it's been 18 months with no legal challenge. So what I'm hopeful for is this is here, we have an ordinance in place, and if folks, when you guys meet with your constituents and the different groups, if they come back with better ideas and ways to refine it, we refine it. And, and we make it better. That's, there's no, there's no harm in doing that. I mean, there are people out there, lots of very brilliant people that live in your town, and, and are lawyers. You have lawyers on the dais, you had frankly, lawyers last year, Marjorie Fox was an attorney. I mean, we worked with a number of lawyers throughout this process. So I think we've taken the due diligence, and that's one of the reasons why it's severability clause in there. But Westfield, I couldn't tell you.
Councilman Miniger, I just want to say, I feel like Councilman Boyer's message was lost on you, that debate is very different than disrespect. And how he was treated and what was said to him is not acceptable. We all deserve respect up here, as we should respect you guys. So I'm going to close that out, okay? And I'm going to open up to public comment. And council welcomes comments from every, every member of the public about topics that are not on tonight's agenda. If you read from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk via email at clerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are limited to come up to, only once, and I'm asking you for three minutes. At three minutes, I will ask you to wrap it up. And, oh, yeah, the mayor's, the mayor's in town. Of course, it's respectful to us to do the three minutes, but it's also respectful to everybody in the room and watching. So with that, I open up public comment.
Hello. My name is Mary Cummins, and I live at 27 High Street. And I would like to say a few words about the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation's proposal for that 42-unit affordable building on the site of the current fire station. So I own a restaurant in town, and because of that, I spend a lot of my time with the very people who, who might likely benefit from that type of housing. Additionally, I have five kids, all of whom went to the public schools, and were taught and coached by wonderful, by wonderful teachers and coaches, whom I suspect would also benefit from this housing project. Likewise, when I shop in town, or I go to a doctor's office, and I, and I talk with the office staff, or a physician's assistant, or when I work out at the Y, or am helped in some way by a young police officer, I am certain that many of the people whom I encounter daily would surely benefit from this type of housing proposal. My husband is a schoolteacher in Chatham, and very few of the young teachers can live anywhere near there. They always are complaining to him. And there are people like the ones that I just mentioned, in all towns around here, who simply cannot afford to live in Summit or any of the surrounding towns. And I think that's really unfortunate, not just for them, but for all of us. Happily, I think the current housing proposal, while not a cure-all certainly, could at least give 42 individuals or families the opportunity to live right here in Summit in a clean, safe, well-situated home. You know, I have to say, I love living in Summit. I've lived here for a long time. It's an amazing town that we have here, and I am not surprised that, that hardworking people who work in this area want to live here, too. It's a great place to live, to work, to raise a family. So rather than seeing this housing proposal as an imposition or a burden to Summit residents, maybe we could view it as a unique opportunity to enrich our community by enabling some hardworking families to live in Summit. What a great legacy to leave behind. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Statement. Mary, may I have your statement? Or do you want to email it?
Yeah.
Okay. Does it have food on it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Jocelyn Matheson. I'm a council member over in Chatham Borough. So we are, we're neighbors. And I came here just to kind of update people on my perspective on what's been going on with this affordable housing law, because I knew that you were, you were going to be hearing about it tonight. I feel like I've been on our council for six years, and it takes about six years to get your brain around how affordable housing works and doesn't work in this state, with an emphasis on the doesn't work. They tried to kind of cram this affordable housing through during the lame duck season, and we're, and it was pulled. I think that they were surprised at the resistance, but then immediately put it back on the agenda for January. And, you know, most of us were going through reorganization meetings, we were, we just sworn three new council members who, who have not had time to learn about this. So I've been down to Trenton and testified three times against this. And I've testified as a Democrat, but as somebody, and somebody who believes in affordable housing, and believes in economic diversity, but who also believes in really, in good public policy, which is my, which is my background. So I think that it's important to understand, this is moving really, really quickly. Municipalities, we're not at the table developing this, and we need to insist on a seat at the table in, in this, in this law. As a clarification, it's, it's not, it's not, this law is, is, the alternative to this law is the status quo in the courts, which is a nightmare. It's been a nightmare for us, it's been a nightmare for Madison, it's been a nightmare for a lot of other communities that have complied in good faith with our affordable housing requirements, and still been sued or threatened with lawsuits and forced to reopen it. So the status quo is terrible. This is not an improvement, but just stopping this is not going to be, is not going to be adequate, nor is any municipality trying to say that they don't have this affordable housing obligation, because the courts have said that. So I really urge everyone, especially to reach out to their senators. I know Senator McKeon has been working very, very hard on trying to get some amendments into this. Fellow elected officials, Morris County has been very organized around Um, fellow elected officials, Morris County has been very organized around this. Uh, but if, uh, if you can, if you can get other elected officials in other counties to realize this is happening really, really fast, and it may be signed before we know it, um, you can reach out to the governor's office. Uh, I sent the council president a four-page letter that we sent the, to the governor. Uh, I think he was a little taken aback, um, about, about this. Um, and in terms of, of asks, number one, I would absolutely agree that the, um, that the amendments that, that we did get through that provided more legal protections for municipalities, so that once you have an approved plan, someone can't just come in and say, hey, Drew Forrest, looks like you could have included that in your plan and you didn't. So we want you to let us put affordable housing there, which is what happened in Madison. So, uh, or with, in our case, all along Main Street, they wanted high-density affordable housing there. So, um, so making sure that those legal protections are adequate, and I'm not an attorney, and stay in there, I think is the number one thing. Um, the, the, the other thing that I, I think is very important is in New Jersey, we're not allowed to require a developer to, to pay for many of the infrastructure costs associated with their development. It's not legal in this state. I do work all around the country, and in other states, you can charge school impact fees, transportation impact fees, park impact fees, et cetera. So, you know, that, I, I think we need to start having this conversation about, we're being, we're bearing all of the in, infrastructure costs associated with five times the number of units as you need for affordable. And at some point, uh, trying to reconcile that in a 2% tax cap is unmanageable. So I'm just asking everybody to get as active as possible on this as quickly as possible. And I'm sure I'm over three minutes, but thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, and thanks for waiting. Oh, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Go ahead. Councilwoman, thank you so much for coming. I've been actually thinking about you a lot, and I was actually on your website today. I was looking at how hard Mendham is advocating for all of the infrastructure costs as well. And that's really why, I don't know, hey, Mike is still here, but that's really why I wanted to, uh, tell Mike today that I think it would be really powerful to look at how many municipalities are having distinctly different problems with this, uh, with the language and the amendments that have been made. Um, because when you speak with our attorney, Jeff Serenian, Nancy Holmes, you know, they're really smart folks in the room. Uh, we will 100% be there on Monday, it's going to be a long day. But, uh, we're really encouraging all of the residents to, uh, to contact, uh, your, your legislatures and, and really make a push for, for this to be stopped and then properly amended.
Thanks for coming. I appreciate it. Come on, who's next?
Hi, Carol Pak Teng, uh, 234 Summit Avenue. The spelling, I don't think I said before, P-A-K hyphen T-E-N-G. Um, just a, just randomly of note, I don't know, there's not really, I know that for the TVs, this is the spot. But, um, I now have long COVID, and it's quite hard to just like stand up here and also the waiting process.
Oh, yeah, you have to speak in the, speak in the microphone.
The waiting process, anyhow, just something of note. Um, it's not so easy for me these days to stand up here. Um, so first of all, Councilman Boyer, I'm sorry that you were clearly hurt by the comments, um, four weeks ago, and that was inappropriate, and so I just wanted to say, person to person. Um, the, um, okay, so, uh, I, I don't think most people who I've, I've spoke, I heard spoke four weeks ago or two weeks ago have been against the intent of the ordinance. We all want to be safer. Um, but the problem most people have raised concerns about is the language, the exact wording, and the larger effects on the community. Um, things that were brought up four weeks ago were, was the word privilege, which is a very loaded word, particularly for people of color these days. Um, that's a, that's, we can choose, we can amend a better word. It's not that hard. Um, you know, I know that, um, Council President, uh, sorry, it's late in the day and I can't really speak that fast, um, from the long COVID. But, um, Council President, you said that, you know, it wasn't that something that, we're, we're not trying to throw something together. Um, but you did pass this four weeks ago with many concerns from the community. You promised me personally, four weeks ago and two weeks ago, that you would reach out to me, um, to speak to me and other constituents in town, and, and I haven't heard from you. Um, nor have I heard from you, Councilman Boyer, as president of the safety committee. And I, I don't, I can't speak for other folks. Mayor Fagan emailed me last night, um, setting something up, and we, I'm cer, um, I wanted to see what was said here tonight before we move forward. And I'm happy for you to invite, uh, Council President Allen. Um, the, you know, and, and Mr. Giacobi also said, yes, that the job of Council President is to reach out to the constituents, to hear our concerns, and to possibly amend this and look at it. Councilman Miniger, four weeks ago, proposed that you got, proposed on the dais that you could hold off on passing the amendment and take the time to rework it.
Council President's at three minutes. Okay, you have to wrap up.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Um, but, you know, I would highly argue that this is not solid. The community has come out and spoke against this, um, in particular, the, the community leaders of color. And, um, I look forward to having a meeting with you.
I just have a quick question. Are you coming up here as an individual or with the group?
Uh, I'm coming up as an individual. I'm also the co-founder of Summit AAPI in town, but I'm speaking for myself.
Okay, and the only reason why is because we're meeting with the anti-racism committee, so I just wanted to be clear.
And I'm not on the committee, so.
Okay, so I don't remember saying specifically to you, but I'm happy to meet for sure, like, I didn't.
You said you were going away next week because you're, you were headed something with your son, and so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay. All right. All right, next. Come on up.
Teresa Solano, 38 Lewis Avenue. I'm going to switch gears here a little bit. In regards to the proposed stadium lighting at Tatlock, who are the key stakeholders? Is it our house and my family's 90-year history on Lewis Ave, 60 years on Woodland Ave, with my mom's family of 10 who grew up on Beekman? Is it the Washington School Neighborhood who will be most directly negatively impacted, but then will be engaged with to help raise $700,000 to $800,000 playground shortfall? Is it the club sports teams that knew about this before the residents? Is it the taxpayers who will be burdened with the electricity and soft costs every year? Is it the Board of Ed? Armed with information, we make better choices. Although council states that this is in the very early stages, it feels like this project is full steam ahead, as I found myself involved with this public unfolding after a handful of residents proactively reached out about this proposal. If you build it, they will come. Who is they? We're not sure. I've asked in the spirit of, everybody's favorite words, transparency and due diligence, to illustrate not just for me, but for the city, who and when will be using the field if permanent sta, if permanent stadium lighting is installed? If the city knows what the master schedule is this year and has years of historical data and is telling constituents this could be, blah, 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 this could be coming in 2025, play around with it and show the residents how this can positively impact the community and what sports groups potentially will be practicing on the two field spaces under the lights. That's common sense planning to justify this need and proposal. I don't know if anybody on here is an urban planner and capable of making a sound decision without publicized traffic studies or environmental, environmental studies at bare minimum. The comparable field that was provided is in Bucks County, Pennsylvania, with not a house in sight. This serves as a regional high school with almost 3,000 students, more than double the size of Summit High School. It looks like a beautiful facility that works given their topography. It's infuriating that there has been an official subcommittee on this since 2018, yet no one with any real skin in the game that lives here was considered to be part of it. There was a Tatlock Commons Advisory Committee in 2006 that included three Washington school members, including the PTA president, teacher, as well as, uh, resident, as well as Bob Weck, representing the Police Department and Traffic. I ask, will some neighborhood residents be placed on the current Tatlock's subcommittee? Tatlock Lights Subcommittee? Will Lieutenant Daley, Summit PD Traffic Division, be placed on the subcommittee? Why are we putting lights on Tatlock and not the tennis courts and baseball softball fields at Memorial? Lower high school or middle school fields are also other considerations. Can we please slow down this runway train and do traffic and environmental studies first and then publish them? Furthermore, as this proposal is gaining more attention, conveniently ancillary nighttime items from a September 22nd, 2022 meeting were left off the DC Pa, the Department of Community Programs page. These included parking, noise, trash, lighting curfew.
Council President, we're at three minutes.
Vandalism.
Please wrap up.
Teen issues and drinking. I've had communications with the city over the last few years about the trash at the field, and Mark has said Tatlock is a never-ending battle. It's a battle worth fighting to preserve the serenity of this special part of town filled with many young families and the old guard who stood up 20 years ago when toxic turf was proposed right before the elementary school.
Thank you. We have to end, I'm sorry. Thank you. May I have her statement? Oh, yeah, do you want to? Yeah, perfect. Did you already email it? Did you email that, or didn't she take it? Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Council President?
Yep. I'm going to let, hold that thought, sorry.
Good evening, council. My name is Reverend Dr. Robin Tanner, For Waldron Ave. I'm the minister at the Beacon Unitarian Universalist Congregation and the president of the Summit Interfaith Council. It is good to see you all this evening. Um, I'm not here to speak on the safety ordinance, um, but I did want to say, um, Councilmember Boyer, I'm so sorry for the emotional distress, um, that you've endured, and I certainly look forward to working with you, um, as we go forward next week. Recently, the Summit Interfaith Council held a retreat where we've recommitted to interfaith partnerships, our mission of seeking the welfare of the city, fostering relationship building throughout the city, and supporting affordable housing, which we have a long history of engagement with. I'm here this evening to urge you to consider the project at the Old Firehouse Site and 7 Seater Street. This project is in keeping with Summit's history on affordable housing. It will strengthen our community by ensuring that community members who work here are able to live here. And while no project can solve all of our housing needs, this would be an incredibly important step forward in the right direction. I'm sure you know the legal imperatives better than I do, and I certainly don't want to get into those this evening. But it is the moral imperative for affordable housing which guides me this night. I'm also here as a minister whose faith teaches that housing, having a home, is a core human right and necessity. Nearly every religion teaches about the need to provide shelter and community for those who are otherwise shut out. For you clothed me and gave me shelter, grant sufficient for what a person lacks according to what is lacking to him, I could go on. On a personal and somewhat vulnerable note, when my family moved to New Jersey nearly eight years ago, we hoped to be able to live where I was ministering, but Summit was simply out of the price range for us. I know this is true for other community leaders and members who contribute to this community, who pour our hearts and every effort into this community, and would love to truly be a part of it, but for whom Summit is not accessible. There are folks here who see this as their true home, but cannot call so on their address. I encourage the council to continue Summit's history from 1938 to the 1950s and 1960s, as our council president has reminded us, including the housing created in 1972, 1979, 1986, 2012, and just recently in 2023. Continue the character of a welcoming and inclusive and thriving summit that meets not only a court mandate, but calls us to the best of our values together. The Summit Interfaith Council gladly pledges our partnership, our time, and our support in that endeavor.
We're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Solberg. I have lived at 46 Floral Avenue for the past 30 years, and raised my three children who came through Summit Schools, Brayden Middle, High School, of course. And, uh, I'm currently, uh, retired from a career working as a New Jersey school principal for the past couple decades. I volunteer my time at Summit Warmhearts, which you're familiar with. It's a day program for the homeless, sponsored by the Summit Interfaith Council that you just heard about from Minister Robin. I'm proud to be a member of At Home in Summit, advocating for the affordable housing here. The lack of affordable housing in, in our state and our city concerns me greatly. Rising rents have pushed hardworking families out of our, their, their apartments. My personal story is I grew up in the 1950s in a lower-middle-class neighborhood in Brooklyn. Although my father was a recent immigrant, his income allowed my mother to stay home and raise my three brothers and me. Over time, we were able to buy an older house, fix it up, and build up equity. I had access to good local public schools and was able to be successful in my career. Nowadays, low-income working families pay over half of their income for rent. Often, so such, such families need two jobs to survive, and they may not be one, and they, and they may be one paycheck away from being evicted. Hardworking households, people dedicated to the area, dedicated to Summit, uh, have a, can have a very difficult time to improve their financial situation under these situations. I endorse the current plan of the construction of 42 units of affordable housing on the former fire department property. The Firehouse Site is an ideal place for this proposal in many ways. In addition to nearby bus and train service, it's an easy walking distance to schools, downtown shopping. Such a project, as you've heard before, would be life-changing for these 42 families. They could get a leg up financially and have less stress in their lives to raise their families. I ask our mayor, city council, to move forward this and make the project reality. And I know you guys are busy and you got a long meeting ahead, and I'm ending my comments. Thank you.
Can we have your statement?
No notes to give.
That's okay.
My wife, my name is John Warabats. I'm at 44 Lewis Avenue. Sorry, it's been a long wait.
No.
And, uh, my wife just informed me that I've been a Summit resident for 50 years, half a century. Got to wrap my head around that. I knew people that they were that old. I'm a retired teacher. I have, uh, I have graduate credits in outdoor facilities planning. I have graduate credits in educational facilities. And in the words of Yogi Berra, it's deja vu all over again with the lighting. And you have to ask yourselves, as a common council, why don't we have them? Summit's a first-class town. 20 years later, why don't we have them? Because of the negative impact on the tiny neighborhood, which I like to call Martinsburg Park. You know, it really is a jewel. It's an outdoor teaching site ripe for development, to have an environmental education center there. I developed one in Mount Arlington, New Jersey called, uh, Centennial Oaks. And it's prime, the school buses go over there from all, from all over the town. We have water, we have century-old trees. We even have bank swallows. You know what a bank swallow is? These are birds that live in the, the bank of a stream. My, my kids have caught trout back there. And to put these light towers up, if you have ever been to a correctional institution with the barbed wire and the 75-foot towers, that's what we're getting. And the difference is here, you can show pictures. My backyard is the football field. And there are plenty of houses that my back fence is there. And you're going to put these towers up for a million six? It's out of line. But Friday Night Football under the lights is a special thing. I was also a senior class advisor over in West Orange High School, 550 kids, senior prom. Not a kid got thrown out drunk or drinking, because we had rules. And I said, the money you're spending, you don't want to get kicked out. This is a wedding without the ceremony. But the sad part of it is, a million six to, to bring down property values. It's a negative impact. It's common sense. That's why we don't have the lights. It's common sense. Kids are going to be up until 10 at night practicing?
We're at three minutes.
As an educator, it's senseless.
Thank you.
Doesn't make sense. Wait a minute, they all got a long time to talk, and this is important.
You'll have to wrap up, 30 seconds.
This is really important. And I would like to ask the whole common council, ask why there are no lights? It's because the common council knew the negative impacts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rosemary Grace, 12 Chestnut Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity to share my comments. Thank you for this opportunity to share my comments as a member, a proud member, of At Home in Summit, located at the website at homensummit.org, which I hope and invite people to visit, in the issue of that favorite word, transparency. So, as you know, you were presented at the previous meeting with a proposal by the Summit Affordable Housing Corporation for the 42-unit affordable housing project on the Firehouse Site. I wholeheartedly support this proposal, and I hope you will as well after you complete your due diligence. I have a personal relationship to the location of this proposal because I live across the street. And I have some benefits that I'd like to share with you about the proposal from my perspective as a resident who walks in that area all the time. I particularly like that the orientation of the building, the proposal, is going to be on Cedar Street, and that the footprint is really very modest, and that in terms of its relationship to the senior building across the street, it's only going to come face the Broad Street side up to the actual beginning of the senior building, of the Gallo Building. And the benefit of that is that the vista across the street is not, is going to be clear. It's not going to be blocking the historic St. Teresa's Memorial Hall, not like, you know, the previous proposal that was very unpopular. That vista is really important because it also allows folks to walk across and get direct access, which a lot of the seniors like to do. They like to go across and walk over to the services there.
We're at three minutes, Council President.
Okay, so anyways, to wrap up.
Thank you.
I hope that you will support this and that you won't leave all the millions of dollars on the table that are down in Trenton waiting for proposals like this.
Thank you.
Because you've got to be in it to win it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Do you want her statement? Ms. Grace, Rosemary, do you mind giving?
Um, yes. Just handwrite. I'll set something.
Email? Okay, thank you. Okay, should we go?
I live at 18 Hartley Road. During the last council meeting, Mr. Smallwood made three statements about Tatlock Field that relate to process. I'm a process guy. On two occasions, he said, quote, "We will continue to hold small community meetings," unquote, and quote, "I will continue to hold meetings over the next several weeks." The public should see a copy of the plan for those meetings. How many meetings will be held? Where? Who? Will be invited? How will they be invited? How will the discussions be memorialized and made available to the entire community? Ultimately, he said, "It would be my committee to bring the council for a vote." Quote, "I promised them I would not bring this to council for a vote until we got community consensus on something we could all accept." Pardon me, I have a sore throat. Consensus is an interesting word. The American Heritage Dictionary of the English Language defines consensus as, one, an opinion or position reached by a group as a whole; two, general agreement. So this raises several questions that should be answered before consensus building begins. Who are the people who will be the consensus builders? How will they be selected? How many times will discussions take place before reaching a consensus? Who will be the impartial moderator to ensure that the consensus reported accurately reflects the position reached by the group as a whole? Finally, Mr. Smallwood said, "Both groups are going to have to agree on something, right? And whether we approve it or not, we're trying to engage the community at a smaller level and get that input and then bring it to a larger community." Who is the smaller community? Most often, we hear references to the people who live on Butler Parkway, but that's only a fraction of the people who would be affected by the lights. A significant portion of Ward One, Districts Eight, Nine, Ten, and Eleven would be affected. There's also some disinformation needs to be clarified. Some people suggest that field lights seven days a week until 10:00 p.m. has not been considered. There is a written summary of discussion by the Field Lights Working Group of the Community Programs Advisory Board from January 25, 23. It says, quote, "When would lights be on? We discussed from the first week in March until mid-December as needed, but potential for seven days a week turned off at 10:00 p.m. That's on the record." The same document, under Reviews and Communications Sequenceee, says, "Do we go to council or have listening sessions with the neighbors first? No talk of a four-stage plan or of the need to reach consensus." So when did the four-stage plan come into being? Was the plan and the requirement of consensus only reached after proposing the project be funded?
Mr. Bassman?
My last sentence.
It's 3 o'clock, okay.
For these and other reasons, I may enumerate at the next council meeting, I strongly urge you to remove consideration of lights at Tatlock Field from the capital budget because what you have now is a haphazard and incomplete plan that is barely transparent and could have disastrous effects on people's quality of life and the suburban environment of our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, are there any other comments?
Peter Lejoy, 124 Canoe Brook Parkway, Summit, New Jersey. I have a couple of short comments. First of all, I'd like to comment on safety ordinance. I think the city solicitor hit a very good point about adopting the ordinance as a step or step down. This Summit's council, a number of years ago, did the very same thing with the alcohol ordinance. So we adopted an alcohol ordinance so police could charge minors or underage drinkers with an ordinance rather than sending them down to the county. And I think that's probably what the intent of this is. I would say to all of the people that came here in the last couple of months and had a lot of loud words for this council, that maybe they should go down and work on the organized criminals and the mobs that are recruiting young people who don't live in Summit and sending them to various communities, not just Summit, to engage in theft because they're underage and they can't be charged as adults. I mean, I, you know, I think the folks, I think a lot, by the way, was left on the floor by the last council and never addressed. These lights were before this council, and Henry even said it, in January 2023. What did the council do as far as organizing a public forum or communicating with the community, or even communicating amongst itself? Because I sat in these meetings, and there was no discussion among council members about anything other than to vote. But I would really, I'd like to go back to the safety ordinance because, and then I'll finish up. This week, my neighbor had somebody banging on her window trying to break into her car at 8:30 in daylight in the morning. She called the police. The Summit Police responded quickly, rapidly. There were three or four officers there, and both my wife and I were very pleased to see the work of our community policemen. Unfortunately, I don't know whether the person was caught or not, but I can tell you, both that neighbor and another neighbor, both of them are women, and they live alone in single-family homes. And I think they were scared to hell. So I think this is another issue that was before a prior council, and they left it on the floor. They didn't do anything with it other than to push it around. We had a, I mean, we had a development project that suddenly died, suddenly died. The council just ended it in November. Nobody knows why.
Council President, we're three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments?
Jocelyn Modesto, 61 Butler Parkway. I just want to take a moment to highlight one of the many issues with the proposed stadium lighting at Tatlock. In 2004, there was a commitment made by the city to the Tatlock community when both the upper and lower fields were being turfed, and that agreement was not to add lights to the fields because of the burden the town new turfing would have on the surrounding community. This agreement was well documented in newspaper articles at the time, and neighbors who lived here 20 years ago remember it well. A small group of neighbors met recently with Councilman Palowski, who pretty much told us that we cannot trust in that agreement with a prior council. But his next sentence was that this council would like to make an agreement with us. Now, you understand our trepidation to make a deal with this council when they will not honor prior agreements made with the neighborhood. Then in the next breath, Councilman Palowski tells us that, of course, the agreement can always change. It could change by a proposed ordinance modification, and the Tatlock community would have to be on its guard, watching every council meeting and scouring the agendas for the topic to come up. There would be no notice to the neighborhood other than what we investigate and research, sort of like how this original proposal is playing out. No one wants to live like that, not being able to trust in the word of their elected officials and worrying that every deal you strike can be changed. This council's view seems to be, we're not going to honor that old agreement, but we'll make the Tatlock community a new one. Oh, but by the way, it's subject to change. Once the genie is out of the bottle, you cannot put it back in. There seems to be an overarching lack of respect for the Tatlock community as the plans for the fields continuously change. Additionally, we were told that only Summit teams would be using the field at night. However, there's no way to ensure this is enforced. In just the hour we were meeting with Councilman Palowski at the track, there was a Seton Hall Prep lacrosse team practicing at the field, an unsupervised kid running his e-scooter all over the turf, and an out-of-town coach time-trialing runners. There are many weekends where full 11-on-11 men's soccer games occur with residents from Madison and Plainfield. There's personal trainers from out of town that meet their clients at the field for sessions, and the Tatlock neighborhood deals with all that hustle and bustle, in addition to back-to-back team practices and games during the daylight hours. But the overburdened Tatlock community should not have to see it, hear it, and be inconvenienced by it after dark as well. Our quality of life and enjoyment of our properties after dark is entitled to deference and respect. The Tatlock community already shoulders way more than its fair share of burden for the sports community. And then the one thing I just wanted to add to the statement was, Councilman Hamlet, everything that you said when it came to the affordable housing legislation and why it's detrimental to Summit can totally be applied to our community of Tatlock on a micro level. It would be one of the worst things that could happen. It would be devastating. We'd be forced to shoulder an additional burden. It's all applicable to our little community by Tatlock.
Three minutes.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have more questions than a statement. Council has made statements that they will need to change city ordinances to accommodate installing 70-foot stadium light poles in Tatlock, a residential area. Should these ordinances change, will the city be able to stop Oratory Prep, Kent Place, or Oak Knoll from installing their own stadium lighting should they choose to? Would the city be able to control how many games these schools host or what other events they wish to schedule?
Hello, how are you? Eric Kurzlaske, 169 Broad Street. Jamel, I would say sorry, but for me, sorry is one of those words that's super, super cliche and doesn't do anything justice. I was incredibly, incredibly moved by your words. I think everybody in the room tonight and those watching, as well as those that are coming to future meetings, should really internalize that and think about that. There are a lot of people who come up here talking about community. As I stand here or I watch meetings, there are a lot of people who have a sense of entitlement. This group up here is responsible for 22,000 people. 22,000 people. Jamel and I, I don't know if we agree all the time, we're probably not going to agree all the time from a political standpoint, but you will always have my support, and I promise you that. I think when we think about people who come up here, again, talking about community and representation, one of the absolute beautiful things that's come together over the last two years, there are probably six people sitting up here, if my math is right, one, two, three, four, five, six? No, six. There's six people up here, maybe it's, no, I think it's six. Six people who shouldn't necessarily be sitting up here. I'm not a scientist. I'm not a mathematician, but the math doesn't work. This isn't about politics, it's not about Democrats, it's not about Republicans. People voted for six people up here because they wanted to be heard and they wanted to be represented, and I think that's something really important. I've stood up here before, I've been laughed at, I've been told the reason I won't get answers is because somebody is the council president. I've been dismissed, I've sent emails, and so when people walk up here with the expectation that somebody up here is reaching out, that has not been the standard, nor has that ever been the standard. And so I think everybody needs to think about that. I am super, super supportive of the community coming together. There should be engagement, there should be dialogue, everybody should feel represented. There is no obligation to answer to any one resident. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Carlos Hernandez. I'm a resident on Butler Parkway, 85 Butler Parkway. I already submitted an email, and thank you, Mayor Fagan, for responding, acknowledging the receipt and adding that to the collection. So I'm going to be very brief. I just recently became aware of this light fields issue, that it's alarming, the lack of transparency that appears to exist. I read your Facebook post yesterday. You know, a lot of the neighbors here have contradicted your statements about some of the things that you said that haven't been agreed or been discussed. Look forward to you coming to the community, talking, and as well as all of you. I think it's important to understand, and you should have skin in the game if you live in that community, about what this would mean. We already have a lot of traffic as it is, we already have a lot of noise that I enjoy personally, seeing the games and the graduations and everything else that goes with it. I moved to this community about six years ago, have enjoyed where we are, we love the community, we love our neighbors, but the impact that you're imposed, that would be imposed by these lights would be really unacceptable, and I hope you really deliberate this very carefully before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close public hearing. A public comment, but what I'd like to do is, Councilwoman Hamlet, did you want to do?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'm going to say something similar to what I said last time, which is that there's only three people up here that can be blamed for lack of transparency for starting Tatlock lights or having any discussions around Tatlock lights. That's me, Councilman Miniger, and Councilman Vartan. The facts are that there was a meeting in 2018 on October 2nd, and if you Google Summit City Council, October 2nd, 2018, around minute 11, you're going to see Elaine Anderson, who was the chair of, I think, the Community Program Lighting Project, you're going to see her give a presentation. And at the time, McTiernan, Ogden, Beth Little, Nadeau, Bowman, and Gold, I think, were on council. Correct me if I'm wrong, I may have missed one. I think, Matt, when did you get to the city?
I think I was there.
I think you were sitting right there.
I was.
Right? And at the end of the meeting, it's really interesting, because Council President David Nadeau, at the time, he says, "Thank you so much." They give her an award because she was leaving, I think she had just sold her house, I've watched it now five times. And he says, "Are there any..." watched it now five times, and he says, "Are there any, are there any resident comments?" Well, there weren't any resident comments. In fact, there's only a few residents here. There's only a few. And so we're happy to engage on these discussions with Tatlock, but this is nothing, this is not something that is new. This started, from what I can see, as a presentation to the community on October 2nd, 2018. The second presentation was the capital budget request, which was held on 12/18/21. And so, Council President, would I could ask if you could have our city communications officer post these meetings so that the residents can see some of the history behind this? Because the only people who are responsible for any of this up here right now, at least from the past, would be Greg, Andy, and myself. The only time I talked about Tatlock lights was, I think, one time in January of 2023, and that's, I said, "Where's the, let me look at the study," and I don't even think we talked about it in 2023. So we're open to residents, we're happy to engage in the process and be transparent, but let's be very clear, these meetings, watch them on TV, started in 2018, but it wasn't with this council. We are just now beginning to talk about this process and engage all of you. I think that's all I had.
Thank you. I would like to, okay, I would like to say two things. One, I hear you. I understand your concern, and you want, you are, you want community engagement, and I sat up here for two years, listening to another, a previous council, on gas leaf blowers getting pushed through, Broad Street West getting pushed through, and I understand the frustration when you feel like there's something that is important to you and nobody is listening. So I just want to make sure you feel heard, and that I am a huge proponent of transparency and listening. As a matter of fact, in a short order with David Guida, we were working, I mean, I was not working on Maybe Playground, everybody else was, but one of the steps that I was concerned about was that there were a group of moms who wanted music instruments to be incorporated, and there were the neighbors who backed up to Maybe, who were like, "Listen, we don't want the music," you know, and everybody's like, "Well, you moved next to a park," and they're like, "Yeah, we moved next to a park, but not music instruments." So David did a great job, I called him and I said, "Listen, we need to get these people together. The two groups have to talk," because as much work that has been done over the last two years, or however long it was, it's really important that two groups that are clashing have to understand each other. And so David did a great job, he organized a whole field trip, we went to New Providence, and then we went to New Providence, and I felt like we got, we were in a really good place. Everybody, actually, that's how we got the Maybe Playground music, is because we're going to make alterations, and we're going to make sure that everybody, and I would actually say, it's not consensus, it's compromise. You get to consensus through compromise, and that's what it means to be an elected official of 22,000 people. So I am not going to, I don't think anyone up here is going to dismiss you, but I'm just going to say personally, I'm not dismissing the idea of being heard, because I witnessed what it does to a community, and it tore us apart for two years. And it's not the community that I feel that I came and moved to. So I know that everybody's committed to this, I'll say that they're all committed to it. I did a little homework, which is a separate issue around listening and engagement. So on the website, David Guida had kind of sent me to their Community Programs website, there's a list of liaisons that have been on this since 2018, up to 2024. 2018 was Mary Ogden, 2019 was Matt Gould, 2020 and 2021 was Danny O'Sullivan, '22 was Andy Miniger, '23 Delia, and now it's Kevin Smallwood. And I went through, and there's something called the Management Project. These are reports that get printed every year that we can, that are on the website, but when you go and look at it, in, give me one second, I just want to, give me one second. 2021, as of most recent, the, on this, on this report, the Community Programs Advisory Board formed a subcommittee to explore lighting options in Investors Field and the Upper Tatlock Field. This work has been proposed at the Tatlock Redevelopment Plan. So you can find this similar statement in all of these different management plans, and I'm not surprised, because I've heard people come and say, over 50 years, this has been an ongoing conversation. We will have community engagement, we have, we, I'll let you talk, because I also, I'm going to let the mayor say something, because I do want David Guida to come up and say a few words, because I would say that him and Mark Ozarowski are truly interested in making sure that this community draws people together, and sports has happened to be one of the most, it has anchored our community for, probably since its existence. So I don't want anything to do with sports to tear our community apart. So we will listen, and I would like to give the mayor an opportunity to speak.
Very quickly, I mentioned at the last meeting that one of my interests is to do community forums. We are working on a date, sometime either the first or second week of April, hopefully if we can get the, the community heads, department heads, and relevant council people to be able to be available. We will do a community forum slash Q and A slash open house, so it'll kind of be a Department of Community Programs, you know, education experience, and at that, you certainly are welcome to come and speak, ask questions, listen, and engage about, you know, playgrounds and all of the recreation, outdoor recreational facilities, and actually, potentially some of the indoor ones, I don't know. But yeah, anything that the Department of Community Programs is in charge of is fair game, will be fair game at that, and I believe there's a meeting this week where we hopefully will find a, will settle on a date, and that will be announced as soon as possible. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I'm going to call David Guida up, but Amy, did you want to say something?
I wanted to.
Oh, good, okay, all right. Thanks.
Council President, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this project again. I think it's definitely worth mentioning that going back through the management reports, which are publicly available in the budget document that is published each and every single year, this goes back to the 2019 budget report. In 2019, as part of the capital budget presentation, the full light project was actually included. At the time in 20, in 2019 going into 2020, the common council at the time made the decision to approve the study. The study went pretty slowly, admittedly, COVID had a big factor in that, and in 2022, that's when the, when the study was finally completed. Once the study was completed, we, it went out for bid in 2022. In 2023, we received the results of that study, and in 2023, we had, Maybe Playground was a larger priority, kind of took the background, but if you go back through all of our capital budget requests and capital budget presentations, going back to 2019, this has been in there each and every single year. It's been number one in the capital budget that we provide to the CFO and city administrator in the year leading up to the capital budget, and then it's been included in 2020, not in 2021, but in 2022, and 2023, in the capital budget presentations. So those have always been opportunities available to discuss this. Admittedly, something that I like to say all the time is, if we don't have a project and know what something is going to look like, we don't know how to discuss it. So to be able to get the plan from the engineers and from Musco, that's our starting point. So on behalf of Mark and myself, we do apologize to the neighbors for not bringing a plan earlier, but there simply was nothing to discuss prior to having a plan. This plan is our starting point. Now's the time where, working with Councilman Smallwood and Councilman Miniger on our committee, we're really going to take the deep dive of discussing everything with the residents. I might be speaking out of turn, but I really think we are going to go down the route of doing an EIS, doing a traffic study, doing a parking study. So over the next couple of weeks, people are saying, "What are we engaging with?" At this point, it's all over social media, it's all over the chatter on the playground, all over the neighborhood. We're listening to everything, and speaking for Kevin, or Councilman Smallwood, Councilman Miniger, myself, and Mark Ozarowski, our emails, our phones are always open, we are hearing the concerns. At this point, I think we are in a bit of a cycle of just hearing all the concerns, and it's time to come up with a plan of what we're going to do with the community engagement that we've received. So we are putting, working on putting together a community engagement plan, putting together a plan of how we're going to move going forward, which will probably include the studies, and really, once we get the results of the studies, and once we kind of are able to sit down and do this hypothetical forecasting with the field schedule, then we'll be able to have more meaningful meetings to hash it out and come to that, hopefully, compromise on all of these issues. So that's really the goal, and hopefully, we can gain the trust of the Tatlock neighborhood and the larger community to show that we are listening to everybody and concerns are being heard, and we are developing an action plan, but to develop an action plan going forward, it takes time to hear everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Well, to Amy's point, all of the PowerPoint presentations, the meetings aren't recorded, but all of the capital budget presentations are available on the budget site, and all of the management reports are also available. What I'll go back and do is hyperlink on our FAQs on the website, and that way, you can be brought directly to them, instead of searching for them on all the different pages.
Thank you.
Can we just hyperlink the two meetings that I had mentioned? They're on YouTube.
Yeah.
One is the budget request, and then one is that council meeting.
Absolutely.
Are you talking about Councilwoman Hamlet, 2022 Capital Budget Workshop?
It's the meeting from 12/8/21, which was the 2022 Capital Budget Workshop, and then it is the meeting, the council meeting on October 2nd, 2018.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Miniger, did you want to say something?
Through you, Council President. I just wanted to make a comment on the Maybe Playground lights, excuse me, Maybe Playground, Maybe Playground Instruments.
There are no Maybe Playground Lights.
Maybe Playground Instruments. There was just a little bit of info that you mentioned, and I want to clear it up here. I sat through a Zoom meeting with you, where the musical instruments were taken off the table entirely at the end, and I don't believe you said anything at that time. It was me, I reached out to David Guida, I reached out to parents who were concerned, and that's the reason those lights, those instruments are even there. The reason those instruments are even there is for the work from those amazing parents, concerned brilliant teachers, and David Guida, so that's what I wanted to clear up.
What I would actually like to clear up is this, is we were getting a ton of emails, we were going to do the grant, I think it was, and we were getting a ton of emails. So the moms were upset, not upset, but they were advocating, rather, they were advocating for the music, and then we had a second set of email, which usually happens, we have these competing emails, and the other emails were from the residents from, that backed up to Maybe. So I called David and I said, "Listen, this is not going anywhere good. Like, we just need to get everybody together," and that's what I'm talking about. You guys worked on the project, I did not, I do not take any credit for that. All I'm saying is I stepped in at the very last minute just to say, "Hey, what can we do?" And then David did an amazing job, who orchestrated a field trip. So I am not taking credit for Maybe at all, I just wanted to, go ahead, David.
One last thing, and I think it's important just for the record, because lights are a hot topic, there are lights as part of the site plan at Maybe, just along the pathways, along the whole Village Green, I just don't want there to be any surprises.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that that's clear, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I think, you know, for the public to understand, I was listening to most of the residents that lived in the condos that didn't want the musical instruments. Andy was dealing with the musical instruments, so we, at the end of the day, got everybody together, and we figured it out. That's what council people should do, and that was a perfect example.
Sorry, through you, Council President, I want to reiterate that the lights were, excuse me, the instruments were absolutely removed at the end of a meeting, and so I pushed to make sure that they came back on. That's the reason that they're there, the parents, the amazing concerned teachers, David Guida, and my efforts.
Can you say something? First of all, can you say something? First of all, we didn't even know, we don't even know if we had money for the lights, for the musical instruments. So my issue is, we just don't have the money for half of this that we're even talking about. So in reality, we didn't even have money for the musical instruments, so my argument was, why are we talking about the musical instruments, and why are we talking about Maybe Playground? Because right now, we are ripping up the entire Village Green for a pedestrian village transit grant. So, I mean, that's it.
Okay.
Council President, can I just be very clear, we're not talking about lights.
We are clear that we are not talking about lights. All right. I would like to give anybody else an opportunity to speak before we move. Are we good? All right.
Is this for open?
Well, no, 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 we're just, we're going to move, no. Well, I closed public comment, and I was just saying, if you just wanted to add anything from what everybody talked about in public comment.
In public comment, right?
Yeah.
I'll be brief. In, in 2023, the Summit PD handled over 50,000 calls for service, almost a 50% increase. Over the past three to four years, specifically motor vehicle thefts up 117%, residential burglaries up 126%. How many police brutality incidents? Zero. How many false arrests reported in Summit last year? Zero. The word privilege is actually in the 2C Criminal Code. Thing about it is, I sat here for two separate council meetings, and I heard people talk about masked men jumping out of cars with their kids in the driveway, one having a confrontation, people with crowbars going into people's homes. Listen, we gotta, we gotta stop the politics. Yes, when I took office, I said, "I'm going to do whatever I can do to help the police department and the police chief change the dynamic in this town," because this is like a real thing, right? And I used the, you know, I went through the example of growing up here, I grew up here. So people are coming in, you know, week after week, talking about, you know, racism, and how racist this town is, and this and that, and like, I grew up here. Like, don't be scared to go knock on somebody's door, you know, and Carol, I will call you, absolutely, you know, and we can talk, because I don't want you, the children, being scared. You shouldn't be scared of the police, like, you shouldn't be scared of anybody in this town. This is not Chicago, this is not New York City, it's not Atlanta, you know, and I get it, like, they may have some issues or whatever, but the police department do a good job, you know, they talk to the anti-racism committee, they have, you know, all these different, they go through these different trainings and everything, we just don't have those issues, but what we have an issue with is safety, and it's our job to keep people safe, and pass laws to keep people safe.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, we're going to close that, and we are going to move on to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
Ordinance number 24-3307, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-15, Department of Police of the Code of the City of Summit, to add a new section 2-15.15, entitled Custodian of Records.
Thank you, Councilman Palowski.
This is ordinance number 24-3307, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Section 215, Department of Police of the Code of the City of Summit, to add a new section entitled Custodian of Records. Although the city clerk is designated as the records custodian under the New Jersey Open Public Records Act, this body may appoint additional records custodians. Many of the records sought under Oprah requests are police records. The SPD maintains its own records and is in the best position to review, redact, and prepare these records for production under Oprah. Council seeks through this ordinance to allow the police to comply with Oprah requests. I recommend that we adopt this ordinance.
Okay, hearing is open. Council comments? Did you get a second for the hearing? Oh, sorry.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Council comments, public comments? Okay, we will close the hearing, on to the second one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 24-3308, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-43, Rent Commission, subsection 2-43.3, Appointment of Members in Term.
Councilman Palowski.
Yes, this is ordinance 24-3308. The rent commission exists to educate landlords and tenants about their rights and obligations under and tenants about their rights and obligations under the New Jersey landlord-tenant law in association with disputes between them. The Rent Commission also works to assist landlords and tenants in mediating and settling disputes between them prior to resorting to landlord-tenant court. The current makeup has, of the Rent Commission, has five members and has proven in recent times to experience challenges reaching a quorum on a regular basis. Without a quorum, the Rent Commission cannot hear disputes and provide the valuable service for which it exists. This ordinance proposes adding two alternate members to maximize a consistent and month-to-month quorum. I recommend we adopt this ordinance.
We're opening the hearing. You're making a motion to open the hearing, correct?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Hearing is open. Council comments? Public comments? Okay. We will close the hearing. Ordnances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, please start with the first ordinance.
Ordinance 24-3307, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-15, Department of Police of the Code of the City of Summit to add a new Section 2-15.15 entitled Custodian of Records.
Great.
Thank you. This is ID number 24-3307. Having just completed the hearing about this ordinance, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Hamlet?
Yes.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye.
Okay. On to the next one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 24-3308, an ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 2 Administration, Section 2-43, Rent Commission, subsection 2-43.3, Appointment of Members and Term.
Councilman Pulowski?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 243308. Having just completed the hearing about this ordinance, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. One ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
ID number 11094, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Councilman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to allow the city to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. State law establishes two limits to what a city can increase in their budget, two caps. On the revenue side of the budget, property tax increases are limited to 2% over the prior year's tax levy. And on the expenses side of the budget, appropriations increases are limited to 3.5% over the prior year's appropriations. This ordinance deals with that appropriations limit. It allows for an increase of appropriations up to that limit, and then any difference between the actual final appropriations amount and that 3.5% increase amount, we will still be able to utilize in the event of unforeseen circumstances because we have banked that difference. No actual money is sitting in a bank, but we are reserving that leftover appropriations increase amount for an unexpected future need up to two budget years. We are not planning to exceed this cap. This is an important step the city takes every year, giving us that extra appropriations wiggle room should we ever need it. I move to introduce this ordinance.
A second. Okay. Council comments? All right. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Okay. The hearing will be on March 19th. On to resolutions.
Council President, you probably, I just think we should have congratulated the chief on his designation as the custodian of records. It's a great honor.
That's a huge honor.
And I know Rosie is very happy about that.
I want to personally thank the chief.
Wow. Actually, I was going to say, you were probably pretty excited to hear about Oprah reform earlier by Sarah. Yeah, okay. On to resolutions. Councilman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10, excuse me, 11099, and this resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations for the municipal operating budget. The statutory language required in a resolution like this uses the word emergency, but this is a regular occurrence, not an emergency. These temporary appropriations are to help the city fund operating expenses and payroll expenses until we have an adopted, excuse me, until we have adopted our 2024 budget later this spring. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second. Great. Council comments? Public comments? Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Councilman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11098, and this resolution sets up a dedicated trust for the fees collected for lead-based paint inspections in rental dwellings, and allows us, allows for the expenses related to those inspections to be paid out, paid for out of this dedicated trust. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Okay. Council comments? Public comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. On to safety and health. Councilman Boyer?
This is ID 11050, authorizing a grant application for FEMA assistance to firefighters. This is for two-way radios. The fire department chief is hereby authorized to submit an application to FEMA for firefighter's grant program to provide funding assistance for the fire department in an amount not to exceed $247,230. And that the City of Summit is committed to providing a 10% cash, cash match for the project. And that the fire department is hereby authorized to sign the grant agreement on behalf of the city, subject to review and approval of the city solicitor. That the fire department's chief's signature constitutes acceptance of the terms and conditions of the grant agreement and approves the execution of the grant agreement. I move this to a hearing.
Second.
You asked to move the resolution. I bet, that's okay. Council comments? Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Councilman Boyer, your second one.
Yes, this is ID number 11057, authorizing a grant application submission for the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety Distracted Driving Statewide Crackdown Grant Program and Execute Guarantee Agreement. Is that my mic?
That was me.
That was weird.
I had it by accident.
Yes. So the Summit Police Department is eligible to apply for $7,000 in funding through this year's New Jersey DHS Distracted Driving Statewide Crackdown Grant Program. With this funding, the department will be able to conduct additional overtime traffic enforcement and curb accidents resulting from distracted drivers. As such, the police department intends to apply for the full amount of $7,000 to conduct overtime enforcement details during the designated project period. The grant application deadline is March 8, 2024. I move this resolution to a hearing.
No, 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 hearing. You just moved the resolution.
Yeah.
For adoption. Okay. It's okay.
Second that, too.
Council comments? Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. On to capital projects and community services. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, this is ID, thank you, Council President, ID number 11060. This resolution, sorry, you can't say. This resolution will appoint Jaclyn Gray to the Union County Community Development Revenue Sharing Committee. She will be, she will be replacing Keith Kennard, who recently left the Summit Housing Authority, as the director. I would like to move this resolution, I'd like to move this resolution for introduction.
It's getting, it's getting late. I know, I know.
I second.
Thank you. All right. Council comments? Public comments? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. At this agenda, at this time, we're going to vote on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Does anybody want to discuss any resolutions before we move on? Okay. Hearing none. Anything from the public? All right. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. On to items for discussion, action, and referral. Maple Street. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. Over the last couple of weeks since we had a DAR from a resident regarding Maple Street, and I know there's obviously other residents who would like Maple Street open for outdoor dining, I've been working with Council President Vartan and committee on several, several items regarding Maple Street, but I thought it would be appropriate for Director Schreger to talk about the things that we've worked on so far.
Thank you. Through you, Council President. Yes, at CAPS Committee, we have discussed in pretty big detail that there is a desire from the public. We've had some feedback to pursue alternative or additional outdoor dining options outside of the standard sidewalk cafe. Obviously, one that comes up quite a bit is Maple Street closure and how we could proceed with doing that if we were to proceed with doing that. So I guess the first question to kind of answer the two-year question really is, is it legal to close Maple Street for in excess of 48 hours for the purpose, in this case would be outdoor dining? And the short of it is, that was detailed in a memo by our attorney last February, there is two processes in place that we could follow to obtain the approval in accordance with the New Jersey laws. First would just be a straight closure in excess of 48 hours, which is detailed. The other would be by deeming it, or actually by ordinance declaring it a pedestrian mall, either indefinitely permanently or as a sunset, which was done previously in 2022. That is the processes that would have to be followed. Can we do it at this time? And the short of it is, it requires a significant amount of work and planning to go into it before we could follow what is required in the first method, which is to do a straight closure in excess of 48 hours. Some of the requirements in here do require an engineer certification, which at this time do require quite a bit of work if it even can be done. But in particular, it does declare, or actually state that what's required is that the closure is in the interest and the safety of the expedition of traffic on the public highways, which in itself is almost a conflict within the intent that might be trying to be achieved. So that would obviously take quite a bit of studies and/or detour planning or other means to even arrive at a point where that could be something that could be successfully implemented. That said, from the beginning, the first requirement that you have to submit to the state does just clearly state that you need to know the duration and hours of the closure, which at this time is not yet known. And I think there's a lot of information out there that still needs to be obtained and considered in trying to find solutions, if there are any, in a way to create additional outdoor dining within the street. I can just share that within the engineering division, we are looking at other ways in terms of either shrinking the road or less than 48-hour closures or temporary closures. We just have not had the time and ability to get to that as quickly as we would have liked, which does highlight the other, you know, main factor of trying to obtain a closure this season, is that some dates have been kicked around Memorial Day. I don't know if that's the date. There's been nothing directed or actually stated that's what we want to hope to achieve. And if that is the date, though it is two months away, two months in government time is really like two days. So in order to meet just the requirement of all the ordinances that would need to be in place, just from this point of view to proceed to DOT and giving them a two-week timeline to approve it, which in DOT time is really, that's like a minute. So there's no guarantee that it would come back that quickly. We basically have eight or nine days before the window would close for us to put something together. Additionally, what that doesn't factor in, and the governing body's been pretty, I believe, in consensus about the notion of charging fees to set up in the street, that's a whole separate ordinance process that would have to take place. I'm not familiar, and I don't know if those fees might then make it prohibitive for the restaurants to pursue. So what it really highlights is just, there's a lot of information that's still needed for us to come up with a potential proposal or concepts that might be considered moving forward. We also have, our planner has opined with a memo that basically says, in reviewing the previous master plans, yes, there is some intent to increase public space, specifically Maple Street is not mentioned, but it does mention Beechwood. But he does point out that suddenly it's 2024, and our master plan reexamination is due in 2026. So really, that's going to start within a year or so. So that is a time to really focus on it if we want to have something that doesn't require an annual discussion or consideration. That is a good time to focus on it. But even anything in the more short term before we proceed with the reexamination would just be, there's a lot of information we still need and a lot of concepts we have to work out before we could proceed with something.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments? Actually, yeah.
Sure. You know, we have a lot of, a lot of conversation in council meetings about how we don't deliberate enough up here, right? So I'll just, I'll just say my opinion of it, which is that I think people know I love the way that this happened, the several years that we did it in Summit. Other municipalities do it well. They figure out a way to make it work for their community. They get whatever they need to get down to DOT, and it works, and it's a destination. And I think it adds a tremendous, a tremendous amount to the community vibe and the whole general downtown feel. My suggestion, because we're, this is a DAR, right? We're talking about ideas. My suggestion would be Memorial Day to Labor Day. I think if we, as a council, were to get some consensus on that, we could very easily have a meeting with the downtown business owners and talk about that as a concept. We could use it as the basis for sending a letter perhaps to DOT to say something to the effect of, we're thinking about doing this. And I think if we wanted to, as a council, we could be very upfront and say, we want to get this done. Let's direct city staff to do everything within their power to help us get it done. And I think that's my position on it. So, thank you.
Okay. Council President? You know, let me go to Councilman Boyer, only because you spoke once before, and did you, did you speak?
Yeah, it's just late, and I kind of got lost in the sauce. So, in plain English, like, can this be done? Or like, can you sign off on it, like, this summer? Or is this like, a nonstarter in general? Because I don't, I'm a kind of guy.
Yes, through you, Council President. For 2024, no, there's not, there's not the time, or do we have the clear directive and plan of what we're hoping to achieve to get something accomplished within a reasonable time?
Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yes, I'm going to ask the question in a different way, not to put you on the spot, Director Schreger. I think what we're all struggling here with, the very specific language, and Mr. Giacobi, you can opine here as well, but the very specific language is very clearly laid out in NJAC 16:27-4.1, and then it's B4. So in there, there are, there are three items that need to be done, and then there's one, two, three, four subsections. And then within all of these subsections, there's a huge glossary of what all of these words mean. So public highway, non-public highway, public road. So it's really important, and in fact, maybe we can get the city communications officer to post this tomorrow, it's really important to go through this and understand this piece of, this document. So not only would Aaron have to give a written description of the reason for the non-highway, non-state highway closure, the anticipated duration of the non-state highway closure, and a description of the non-state highway and state highways that are proposed to serve as a detour route. He would have to give the plans depicting the non-state highway being closed and the non-state highway or state highways that are proposed to serve as a detour route. I think we could do that. A recommendation regarding the non-state highway closure in the form of a certification by the engineer bearing the engineer's New Jersey Professional Engineer's seal that you've conducted an analysis of the data submitted pursuant to this subsection. Secondly, the engineer has conducted an investigation of traffic movements and conditions on the non-state highway being closed and those non-state highway or state highways that are proposed to serve a detour route. Third, the engineer's recommendation is based on the analysis and investigation. And fourth, the engineer's recommendation regarding the non-state highway closure is in the best interest of safety and the expedition of traffic on the public highways. Can you sign that or not?
No.
No. The answer is no. He cannot sign that. But what I will say is I think there are alternatives. I think we can certainly have the planner look at, you know, potentially closing something or a street for X. I think we're all amenable to that. We all want outdoor dining. We've asked Aaron to look into the ballards that are, that you can take out so that we're not using the orange ballards. I think there's some things that our planner, and Michael, you might be able to discuss it, that we can think outside of the box if it's less than 48 hours. I think that, you know, I reached out to Wells Fargo because I was wondering if we could even use their parking lot, or maybe we can get a storage container for the tables from the restaurants that are. So I don't think, we're not done with these conversations. We're still exploring them. But, you know, when I specifically ask Director Schreger if he can sign this with his professional seal, and he says no, then I struggle with that. So.
Council President?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to be clear that I didn't disagree with Greg. I like outdoor dining. Like, during COVID, it was maybe even like, save, you know? I like outdoor dining, like during COVID, it was maybe even like save, you know, you know, so, but I just wanted to know that if it was feasible doing it or not, right? In plain English, thank you, Aaron.
I mean, I absolutely love Maple Street dining. And just for the historical perspective, 2020, 2021, and even early 2022, until it did not exist, we had the executive order. So for anybody that's just sort of tuning in, it made it much easier to do that. And so I just, I know we had an issue with the permitting and so forth, so I just want to make sure that we are not putting our engineer in any precarious position that something proper doesn't get signed, because it is, I love it, and if we could make it happen, it would be great, but our engineer has to be able to sign off on that and do the proper paperwork. Administrator Rogers, did you, oh, you know, can I just have Administrator Rogers? Oh, Councilman Pulaski, you can go.
I hardly said anything.
I'll let him speak, oh my goodness, I'll let him speak. Bob, you first, and then Councilman Pulaski.
Most people know I could take or leave outdoor dining, not just on Maple Street, but anywhere. But I have said repeatedly that if I thought that most people wanted it, and it was safe, and it was legal, that notwithstanding the fact that I'd rather drive on Maple Street than eat on it, I would vote to have outdoor dining on Maple Street. So while we're talking about things people would like to see, to come to an informed decision about it, I'd like to know what all the, all the building owners on Maple Street think about this, all of them, okay? I'd like to know what all the businesses that are operating on Maple Street think about this, all of them. And I'd like to know what the people who live on Maple Street, and it might only be one or two people, but I'd like to know what they think before, you know, we would decide anything. Are we going to close it seven days a week for the whole time? Is it going to be during a certain set period of time? Is it safe? Right? The buildings on that block of Maple, on the block of Maple Street between Beechwood, Union Place, and Springfield Avenue, Maple are old. There was an electrical fire at the Elks that, I don't know, it was a five, six, seven, eight alarm fire, which I learned means that you bring in fire trucks from that many towns because they were scared to death that the entire block was going to go up. So there's a lot that has to be looked at here. And with regards to legality, I still need somebody to explain to me how closing Maple Street is ever going to be in the interest of safety and the expedition of traffic on the public highways. I just, I don't see it. I'm open to somebody explaining that to me. I just don't see how we do it. But those are the kinds of things that I would want to see before I could, in good faith, vote to support future closure of Maple Street. So I don't know who's responsible for pulling all that together, but that's what I'd like to see, so, thanks.
Councilman, if I may, I had said it a couple of years ago, that it's an arduous process, and it is an arduous process to do it. You just heard Councilwoman Hamlet go through the statute, there's a lot of different components to it. The other thing I'll tell you is, is that the tenor of the NJDOT has changed a lot. When we were going through COVID 2021, and even kind of beginning of 22, things were a lot more lax. My, my guesstimate is that, A, your engineer won't sign it because he's not comfortable, they won't approve it because it is a major thoroughfare. So, you know, I think people should just know that it's a very, it is a difficult process, and they are looking at things a lot differently than they did, you know, two years ago when we were in the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. People have almost kind of forgotten that there was a pandemic, to be quite honest with you.
Yeah. Administrator Rogers, would you like to speak?
So I have a lot of thoughts about Maple Street. It sort of brings me back to when I started in Summit and the process we went through in 2016, which was a very different planning process that we engaged the community on. And part of what we discussed was about looking at public amenity space, looking at placemaking. We didn't fully develop it, there was reference to Beechwood. We created a parklet and people lost their mind over two parking spaces lost. And so it's a very sensitive topic about taking public space for one use and changing it to another. I think people understood what we did on Maple Street accommodated something that was lost for those restaurants, which was the use of their restaurants. So it was a very different purpose that this, that the council at the time, and we agreed was the necessary step to do that. It continued into 2022. I don't want to rehash what we did or didn't do properly, but this requires a much more robust planning process to decide whether we're going to close the street, if that's even a possibility in this downtown. I would argue circulation is a big part, and I'll give credit to Mr. Orin back here, who brought up this issue a couple of meetings ago, which required us to go back and really look at the master plan, because I think it is relevant, it is incredibly relevant to what we're trying to decide. And trying to decide this in two or three months is absolutely absurd, and we shouldn't be doing that. We should, we should absolutely go through this process next year when we think about how we're going to go about the reexam process in 2026. So honestly, from our standpoint internally, I don't want to waste any more time considering whether we're going to close Maple Street. I want to make it very clear, I do not support it, I would not recommend this council even consider it. We have to go through a different process, and it will require a much more robust discussion with this community, what they want to do for placemaking, because it is, it's a, it's a very unique process you have to go through, and you can bring in incredible planners. We started that process, we never really finished it during that reexam process, and then we went down a different path with redevelopment. But I think this community wants public gathering spaces. I think I've heard that. I've sat through three years of proponents and opponents on this issue. To close a street and to continue to close a street when there hasn't been an honest, like, planning process involved, I think it's not right. It's not the right way to govern, it's not the right way to do these, to conduct ourselves here. I love, it's not about outdoor dining, it's about public gathering and to make Summit an interesting place to come visit. And that's what it was about when I started, and I think we need to get back to that and figure out where it makes sense, because after observing this and seeing how, what the impacts were on that street, plenty of people come up here and have explained what the negative consequences were as they observed it in front of them, their businesses, their retailers, the property owners, some of the property owners came up and expressed that they don't support this. It's the same issue we're hearing over in Tatlock, you know, the property owners are making that argument, we have to listen to this, we have to go through this process, and it's going to take time. It is definitely not going to be accomplished, and I don't want to burden our engineers any more than they are with trying to figure this out again in a couple of months. We have to, we have to put an end to this. So I recommend that we just stop talking about Maple Street and whether it's a possibility this year, because it's not. And so let's try to go about this in the right way, and it should be a designated committee about placemaking next year when we start to consider our reexam process in 2026.
All right, thank you. I will say, I was one of those individuals that did not like the parklet when it first came out.
You were one of those, maybe?
Yeah, and it would agitate me, but I will say, I did fall in love, you know, COVID allowed for us to see public spaces in a different way, and I did fall in love with being outdoors, and there was the vibe and seeing our friends. So I definitely am, I agree that the master plan, we're going to be working on that and doing some placemaking. Okay, so, Councilwoman Hamlet, is there any additional?
No.
All right.
Thank you, Director Schreger.
Okay. Do public comment for DARs or just, it's council?
No.
Nope, okay, just want to make sure.
Absolutely not, because it's illegal. You can have that, we can adjourn.
Gotcha, okay. Councilmember comments and new business? I'll start at this end, since I've been starting at this, oh wait, I'll start at this end, he's on the same. Bob, Councilman Pulaski, do you have any comments? Council comments?
No, thank you, Council.
No?
I know.
Council comments? Okay, council comments?
I'd like to thank Officer Cortiga for going to the housing authority and doing scam prevention with our seniors, good job on that. The elevators that are in Vita Gala are being replaced, and the community center on Glenwood is being renovated. I think there is some asbestos issues, but they're getting through that. So last thing is, Engineer Schreger and the chief, we have conversations about our downtown and parking and people double parking and crosswalks. So that is a conversation at every safety meeting, and so there will be some things happening in that, in that space. The other thing is habitual violators of illegal parking. The idea was you would get a sticker on the side of your, your window, nice big orange sticker that says, you'll be towed next time, and they are a pain to get off. The idea is that we got to do something about illegal parking, you know? I mean, you can't just park wherever you want to park. You know, we spend tens of thousands of dollars for signs, and people are still parking, overnight parking. So, you know, I'm heavily concerned about that, and we're looking into that, so, that's it. Said enough.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh my God, you're killing me.
I didn't, I didn't pay him.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do I have? No, 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 motion, right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Have a good night, everybody.